Welcome to the Cupertino City Council's special meeting. Today is October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow is not at the dais yet. Councilmember Frueen?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Mayor Wei?
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are moving to ceremonial items. Number one is recognition of October as Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month. We recognize October as Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month, a celebration of an ancient culture that spans thousands of years, that has enriched our community by adding depth and diversity to the American social fabric. The celebration is a global movement highlighting Hinduism as a tradition and the countless contributions Hindu Americans have made to society, and certainly here in our beautiful city of Cupertino. This is an opportunity to learn about the rich cultures and traditions of our Hindu community, offering us essential steps towards a healthy and cohesive society. Happy Hindu Heritage and Awareness Month. The second ceremonial item is recognition of the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Week. The second week of October is Code Enforcement Officer Week. This is a time to recognize and celebrate the unsung heroes who worked diligently, often behind the scenes, to ensure our community is safe, clean, and compliant with local regulations. Their tireless efforts here at the city of Cupertino play a vital role in maintaining the quality of life we cherish. This week, we salute the hardworking code enforcement officers who continue to strive to uphold the standards that improve the quality of life of our community. We're grateful to all of you and thank you for all that you do for our city. And I'm lucky that we have a third ceremonial item. Silicon Valley Clean Energy Electric Showcase Award honoring a Cupertino resident winner. I'm happy to serve as an alternate on the board of Silicon Valley Clean Energy along with Vice Mayor Mohan, who is the man representative from Cupertino. Tonight, I'm excited to welcome Silicon Valley Clean Energy to our council meeting to share more about the Electric Showcase Awards. As Dan Bray from Silicon Valley, Director of Strategic Development, comes up, we'd like to show a brief video on the Electric Showcase Awards. Please roll the video.
Yes, Mayor, I will queue that up right now.
I'm Steve. We live in Campbell, and we are going electric.
My name is Alexander Moore. I live in Work and Health, California, and I'm going electric.
I'm Judy. I live in Campbell, and I'm going electric.
I'm Scott. I live in Sunnyvale, and my family is going electric.
We just figured anything that we can do to replace what we're using now with gas and have it be driven by clean solar and wind electricity through Silicon Valley Clean Energy would be an improvement.
Hi, I'm Amit. I live in Cupertino, and my family is going electric.
Hi, my name is Seva, and I have a business in Mel Peters, and we have gone all-electric.
I'm Brady. I live in Sunnyvale, California, and I'm going electric.
I'm Judy. My family lives in Los Altos Hills, and we've gone all-electric.
The biggest benefit we've had is what it's done to our monthly bills. Not only am I helping the planet, I'm also helping my pocket.
I'm Cindy. We're here at Congregation Betham in Los Altos Hills, and we're going all-electric.
I'm Tom. I live in Los Altos, and my family went all-electric.
My name is Crystal, and I live in Sunnyvale. I'm going all-electric.
I'm Carol. I live in Saratoga, and I've gone electric.
It has been a long transition for us. We didn't just decide we're going electric, and then we just did it all. As appliances age, we've changed them out.
My name is Kurt. I live in Gilroy, and we're all-electric now.
I'm William.
And I'm Lakshmi.
We live in Sunnyvale.
And we've gone all-electric.
I'm Justin. We live in Los Gatos, and we went all-electric.
We're Sunshine Gardens Apartments.
And Mountain View.
And we're going electric.
I think most people would like to do the right thing, but if it's going to cost them a lot of money, it makes it tough. But between the tax rebates and the Silicon Valley Clean Energy rebate, these things are affordable, very affordable.
Thank you for the video. I'd like to invite Mr. Bray, Director of Strategic Development of Silicon Valley Clean Energy, to come and introduce our Cupertino winner.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. My name is Don Bray. I'm Director of Strategic Development with SVCE. As you know, we were formed back in 2016 by the city of Cupertino and twelve other Silicon Valley communities. And since our formation, we have helped our communities reduce emissions by twenty-five percent, and we've saved money in the process. In fact, in Cupertino, we've saved residential and business customers about four and a half million dollars. So, emissions reduction and savings. We're also offering programs, as you've heard, to help our communities reduce carbon emissions from vehicles and buildings. And we're providing up to eight thousand dollars in rebates to residents who transition off of gas appliances to electric appliances. And tonight, we're delighted to celebrate one of our Electric Showcase Award winners. The awards recognize people in the community who are leading the way in electrifying their homes and their buildings. This was a historic year for our awards. We had over a hundred and fifty applicants, from which we selected sixteen winners. One of those winners is from the city of Cupertino, and there was probably a spoiler in what you saw in the video, but the winner is Amit Bhutala. Amit's family is updating their home that was built in nineteen eighty-two to all-electric, and since 2017, his family has done the following. They've installed solar plus battery storage. They've swapped out their gas water heater for an electric heat pump water heater. They've swapped out their gas dryer for an electric dryer. They've installed an induction stove top. And now they are doing their yard work exclusively with electric lawn care equipment. And we're told that when their furnace finally gives up, they're going to replace that with a heat pump HVAC system. And then I think they'll have absolutely all-electric home. If you're interested in seeing more buildings that are going electric like this in your community, we invite you to join us at the Electric Home Tour. That's this Saturday, October the fourteenth. These tours are happening up and down the peninsula, and there are several homes and buildings that are open here in the area. To learn more and to register, go to electrichometour.org, all one word, Electric Home Tour. With that, we'd like to congratulate Amit and invite him up to join us for a quick picture with the council.
Members, please move to the front podium. We're honored to take a picture with the award winner. We're honored to honor one of our very own. Thank you for electrifying your house and saving the environment, your role model for all of us to follow. Thank you very much. Would you like to speak a few words?
On the spot here. Well, it's been quite a journey, I think. I am a bit of a tech file, so I love putting gadgets around. And so it's been one step after another, and it's been quite an experience to figure out how to bring these things together. These are modern appliances. They're more user-friendly, and they're also safer for the environment, so it works out very well, I think. Thank you very much.
This concludes ceremonial items. We're going to move to postponements and orders of the day. Do we have any postponements?
No, Mayor Wei.
All right, then let's move to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council, but not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have nine speaker cards from Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom, which should bring us to just thirty minutes.
Perfect. Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start with Dennis Whitaker, followed by David Hahn, followed by Kathy Helgerson. Welcome, Dennis.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. I brought David in case I run over the three minutes. Three subjects tonight. The first one, you see I have a DeAnza Optimist Club shirt, and I just finished my second term of president of the Optimist Club, the DeAnza Optimist Club. This is my eighth time of a Cupertino Optimist Club, and they suggested I come here and thank you folks because we couldn't do what we do unless it were you folks helping us. So I'm not reading like I should, so shame on me. I want to thank Hung Wei. I want to thank Liang Chow for visiting us. I want to thank Pamela Wu, and I want to thank Deborah. And I wrote it down, but I better get it right, Nascimento, because they all visited our club at various times to help support us. The rest of you, shame on you, but we'll gladly take you anytime we can get you. I also want to thank our wonderful Parks and Rec Department and our wonderful Public Works Department because we couldn't have done what we've done without these folks. Number one, our major fundraiser, the Cherry Blossom Festival. That's where we get the bulk of the money to do the things we do. Number two, the Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast. We cook. Number three, the Bike Rodeo, the Fall Rodeo, where we try to help kids learn how to do things on bikes. Number four, our wonderful Youth Appreciation Week, where we go all through Santa Clara County, asking principals to give us to students who volunteer for the community. And the next to the last one, Breakfast with Santa. We do the cooking for Breakfast with Santa at the Quinlan Center. And lastly, and thank you Hung Wei and Liang Chang for coming, Respect for Law, where we honor a sheriff, a central fire, a EMT person. And so I wanted, we, the club, and I want to thank you also very much. Subject number two, and I'm going to put a book down because this is very famous, so if you can bring that up whenever you can, I'd appreciate it. It's on Veterans Day. I want to invite everybody to Veterans Day. I am co-chair under Colonel John Swenson, who is a professor emeritus at DeAnza College in the English Department. And we have two great speakers this year. The Honorable Fran Harvey, who is a former Secretary of the Army, and a retired Navy captain, Tom Dietz, who was a Navy SEAL. And believe it or not, eighteen years ago, a former Montevista graduate student was killed in Afghanistan. And one of his classmates from Montevista came to this city council meeting and asked the city council, is there anything we can do about it? So Sandy James, being on the city council, and a former mayor, just picked up and carried the ball. She ran with Matt's parents, Corky Axelson, who is a Vietnam vet, and Donna Axelson, who's a Cupertino teacher. And Sandy also organized a committee for the Veterans Committee, and it took a very short period of time to get this supposedly three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, which ended up being over a million, thanks to the city council.
Thank you, Dennis. That is your time? Your time is expired.
I'm over my time?
Yeah, it's expired, yes.
Oh, it's one minute?
Three minutes.
Oh, I'm over to three? Okay.
Yes.
David?
And just a reminder to everyone to have your speaker cards submitted in the next five minutes and forty seconds, or have your hand raised on Zoom. And next we have David Hahn. Welcome, David. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to share. I am the current adjutant of Stevens Creek Post, six floor two. We're a veteran organization that serves the veterans of Cupertino and the local areas. There are many posts throughout the Bay Area, and we are one of them that hold this event called Rees Across America. The city has been at our events since the beginning. We thank you for that, and we continue to encourage you to come out and show your support. This year, the theme is, I think, serve and succeed. This event, again, is a time where we honor veterans through placing Rees on their tombstones in any cemetery that has veterans. We try to raise funds to make sure that we can cover every grave site that has a veteran. They cost about, I think, fifteen dollars. Is that right?
Seventeen.
Seventeen now, and you can go online and donate. And then we make this into a beautiful ceremony where we have speakers, and we share stories, share some snacks. The local Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts come out and join us and run the event. Dennis, I think, also had some other things that he wanted to contribute, but we would like some kind of proclamation, as well as a proclamation for Veterans Day from the city, if possible. So I'll let Dennis finish. Thank you.
That was it. We just wanted a formal proclamation for both events. They're very, very important.
Point of order, Dennis. No consolidation of times allowed.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Was there anything else?
You have one minute remaining.
Yes, so again, it will be held at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery this year, as it has been for the last three or four years now, I think. No, is it more than?
Eight.
Eight years. It's already been eight years. So it was started, actually, by Dennis, and also another member of the city, Mike McNutt, who's not here today. But thank you very much, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you, David. Next we have Kathy Helgerson, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Mooney Maripatla. Welcome, Kathy.
Okay, I have sent emails and comments, met with Kitty and the staff, and I was told to ask, what I was requesting was the... I was told to address an ad hoc committee request for the homeless and immigrants. That's what I was asking. Kitty's familiar with that. And I've been sending emails to all you guys, so you all know that. Okay, this is regarding homeless and undocumented immigrant problems. People especially that live in California and the Bay Area for ten or twenty years that cannot get a green card. So the committee could do so much more. So I'm hoping that maybe I was told to come and address you guys because I'm not getting any responses as far as a yes or a no. The other problem is, is the migrants coming over from Mexico. They could be terrorists, cell groups waiting to commit terrorist actions. What is the city doing to address such a situation, especially after the new war in Israel and the Hamas, I can never pronounce it, Iran group atrocities? We now have two wars going on, Ukraine, as you all know. How is the city addressing these problems, if at all? I believe that the city should start to look into the possibility that attacks could happen. I don't know how often you guys are watching. Obviously, you're working, and you're not watching Fox News, but there's some horrible things going on. And we're funding this war. We have to help Israel. We're funding the Ukraine war. And as far as I'm concerned, as a citizen, and I wish that somebody would also agree with me at the city, and the cities would get together and start to do something with our congressmen and our state senators and our government because we are at war. Don't kid yourselves. As far as I'm concerned, if you're contributing to a war or a country that's having a war, whatever, with arms, you are in a war. Now, I lived through the Vietnam era. My friends went to Vietnam. They didn't come back. I was back east. People burnt their draft cards. They went to Canada. They ran away, the young men did. This is another Vietnam. If you don't remember, some of you are too young, okay? But they showed everything on TV. It was really bad. It was really bloody. And because of that, there are protests everywhere. So we have protests in L.A. and San Francisco, New York, both sides. Palestinians and Israeli people are protesting, and this is ridiculous. So I need to get the city to be involved in this because there could be terrorist attacks that will come out soon, especially if Iran gets involved in this mess that's going on here. And they're the ones that are contributing money to Hamas. So you guys need to watch the news and be aware of what's happening. And everybody be on guard because we don't...
You're now muted. Thank you. Next we have Jean Bedord, followed by Mooney Maripatla, followed by Rich Parker. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord. I'm a Cupertino resident and a former library commissioner. I'm speaking tonight to urge the city to resume video recording of all commission meetings, starting with Parks and Recreation. Video recording and retention of those videos are important tools for improving governance. They're two separate issues. The first is real-time accessibility to the public, which has been abused recently by Zoom bombing. That bad behavior is likely to die out once the novelty is over. So that is not an excuse for excluding the public. The second is improvement in governance. Right now, if I miss attending an in-person commission or committee meeting, I have to wait a month to read the formal minutes to find out what's happening or talk with some of the commissioners. That's too long. In the meantime, misinformation and email accusations may have occurred with no way to verify the actual situation. In addition, those formal minutes are inadequate for determining what actually went on in the meeting. Many times, there are significant interactions that are not captured in the minutes. Commissioners need to be held accountable for their behavior, and there have been instances of bad behavior, but those are not captured in the minutes. Lastly, but not least, video recordings are essential for the council to evaluate the effectiveness of commissions by observing both the commissioners and the staff. It's no secret that some commissions are better than others. This can be a combination of misunderstanding of the commission's role as well as inexperienced commissioners and new staff members. I urge council to direct staff to explore options for low-cost video recording of all commission meetings to improve their effectiveness. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Mooney Maripatla, followed by Rich Parker, followed by Keith Craft. Welcome, Mooney.
Good evening, Mayor and the city council. My name is Mooney Maripatla, a longtime resident of Cupertino. I also serve on the Planning Commission as vice chair, but I'm here in my individual capacity as a resident. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our city council for proclaiming on July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, opposing state laws that could stigmatize or stereotype our residents by using terms with negative connotations such as the term caste. Our city was the first and the only one to do so in all of California. As you may know, our governor, Gavin Newsom, vetoed Senate Bill SB four zero three, saying that existing laws already cover all forms of discrimination. This law, stigmatizing and stereotyping Indian-American community, is unnecessary. As Indian-American community, we are very relieved and pleased with the outcome. I would like to thank our city proclamation played a role in this outcome. I would like to specifically thank council members Liang Chow, Kitty Moore, and Vice Mayor Sheila Mohan for putting SB four zero three on the agenda and giving us opportunity to express our concerns that led to the proclamation and veto of the bill. There are roughly about a hundred and fifty residents that came and spoke. That's by far, you know, the biggest attendance that I've seen. Thank you, and keep up the good work. I also want to ask one more thing. What's happening in Israel, you know, Hamas attack of innocent civilians and killing, you know, thousands of people, is totally barbaric. It's unacceptable. So if possible, I would like to request our city to pass a resolution supporting Israel because this is, you know, a terrorist attack on ordinary citizens, totally unprovoked. Thank you. You can do this as an emergency measure. I know it's not on the agenda, but please do it as an emergency measure because it's happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mooney. Next we have Rich Parker, followed by Keith Craft, followed by Emily Poon. Welcome, Rich.
I didn't really hear who was going first, but we're kind of together.
What is your name? You're Keith.
I'm Keith Craft. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Cupertino. I work in the golf industry, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the fate of BlackBerry. Let's see. Can I put that this way? BlackBerry Farms Golf Course. Two weeks ago, I spoke about raising the golf rates in order to help out with the bottom line. I'm here just to say a little bit about junior golf. And in this case, I'm actually recommending that you lower the rates to attract more young golfers because a young golfer generally has to play with a parent, so you're going to get two fees instead of just one. BlackBerry is a very special place. It's really a jewel. You can't take kids to a lot of golf courses without getting heckled or, you know, you're playing too slow. That doesn't happen at BlackBerry. And it's really a beautiful place to actually bond with the child. You get to spend one-on-one without any electronic devices and teach them something, not just golf, but you can teach them honesty, integrity, all kinds of things. It's a great place to bond with the child. And we need more parent-child bonding in this world. If you look at what's going on with these shootings, I don't think those children had a very good relationship with their parents. I joined, in nineteen eighty-seven, I joined the YMCA. They called it Indian Princesses. It was now called Indian Guides. Oh, maybe they dropped the Indian part. Maybe it's the guide program. And the reason I joined, the first meeting I went to, they asked, "Do you know what the average time that a father spends with a daughter, one-on-one?" And nobody in the room had a clue. And they said, "This doesn't include sitting at dinner or sitting and watching TV, one-on-one, and the average time per week was twenty seconds." Now, this is nineteen eighty-seven, so maybe it's gone up a little bit. But it just says... So I joined that program, and the program is you spent one night a week, you went to somebody's house, and you did some games or did a craft. And one day a week, you would go out on a bike hike or go play golf or go bowling. But it's really helped with my... I have three daughters. They all graduated from Montevista, and I have fifteen seconds left. I encourage you to keep that course open. It's a jewel. Don't lose it.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Next we have Rich Parker, followed by Emily Poon, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rich.
Yes, I'm Rich Parker, Madam Mayor, Honored Counsel. I want to follow Keith as a friend, but I was surprised that we're even considering redoing BlackBerry Farm and the golf course portion of it. That we've lived here, our family, lived in Flintshire for the last forty-four years, and we've enjoyed seeing the town change and grow. Not all the changes we like, but most of them have been very good. If we change BlackBerry, it changes that whole complex that we have with Deep Cliff, McClellan Ranch, the swimming pool area and park area, and the golf course. My suggestion, and my wife said, "You got to talk to the council." I would say, "Leave it alone. If anything, enhance it a little bit, but don't change it." Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next we have Emily Poon. Thank you, Rich. Next, we have Emily Poon, followed by Rota Frye, followed by Jenny. Welcome, Emily.
Greetings. My name is Emily Poon, and I have been a Cupertino resident for 16 years. Don Halsey has given speeches on why BlackBerry Farm Golf Course should be saved and submitted quite a number of signatures already. When I met him at the golf course before he went on vacation, I collected more signatures and comments. Here they are. I will submit them before I leave. These are the comments. BlackBerry Farm Golf Course is a well-loved golf course for all ages. Its intergenerational appeal makes it stand out among golf courses. Seniors who regularly play here depend on it to maintain health and stay fit. Youngsters come outdoors eagerly for golf. At the golf course, I talked to Connie. Connie retired from her cafeteria job in the Cupertino School District after 30 years. Now she plays golf every day at BlackBerry with her husband. When her teenage grandsons from Colorado visit Cupertino, they are taken to this course to play together. In the summer of 2022, the city ran a survey of Option A, keep the golf course, and Option B, change it to nature trails. A few months later, on September the 8th, a special joint commissions meeting discussed the results. In this three-plus-hour-long YouTube video, comments start at hour two. Alan Takahashi, 30-year resident and former planning commissioner, urged us to save the golf course. He spoke as a member of the public, quote, "It is a jewel for the different generations of a family to learn golf. And once you let it go, it is gone forever. There is nothing that can replace the experience of a family playing together," unquote. Another speaker, a youngish senior, new empty nester, said she started learning golf and felt the joy. To add only three-quarter mile of nature trail and destroy 100% of a public golf course is to intentionally perpetuate golf as a rich man's sport, which is totally wrong. Her doctor no longer has to worry about her health since she took up golf. Her comment really stood out in my memory. Golf is an exercise that helps boost mental and spiritual well-being. One young man said golf at BlackBerry Farm Golf Course is meditative. Here, the message is repeated in different words. Quote, "Please leave it for us. We need it for our sanity." Quote, "We need to keep this green space. This is a sacred haven here in Silicon Valley and all the stress." More people should learn golf. We should do more to encourage our youth to go to the golf course.
Thank you, Emily. That is your time.
Okay. Can I just finish?
Your time has expired. In fairness to all speakers, everyone gets three minutes.
Yes, the pandemic gave...
You're now muted. Thank you. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Jenny. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to concur with what Jean Bedord said about Parks and Rec and also the speakers about BlackBerry Farm. You know, you well know that the survey was enormously stilted and produced, still obviously produced tilted results. And, you know, during the pandemic, we did get more golfers. Cupertino just got a new golfing store, and so it seems like, yeah, golf is on the upswing. Sorry for the pun. I don't golf, but I do support golf. Anyway, I'm Rota Frye, 40-year resident and just overwhelmed by the alarming lack of transparency since the beginning of this year. I'm begging you for a change. Sadly, we know where you stand. You tried to pass a rule that would allow your constituents to speak to no more than three items. This summer, your constituents were expected to be allowed to speak per the published guidelines, but about 50 people were turned away. This is not okay. And there's another rule, and I hope you'll change it. It used to be that two council members could get an item on the agenda, but that's no longer the case. Three council members can turn an idea down before our staff can do due diligence. So council is effectively making decisions without staff input. That's not okay. We are losing public input and transparency. All of a sudden, council meetings, the start time was changed. Tonight was actually supposed to be 5:30. Shutting out your constituents who are still at work or commuting home. This was done without council input or even changing our municipal code. It sounds like someone complained, and tonight's meeting is now at the regular time, so I'm grateful for that. For the past two meetings, Parks and Rec, as Jean Bedord said, commission has not been recorded. I'll tell you, the mayor's morning coffee today had many people. They were interested in pickleball. Their concerns if they went to Parks and Rec would not be memorialized at the Parks and Rec Commission. You know, the Parks and Rec Commission decision to not record was made without council input. It's not okay. I asked the council to restore the recordings, and as I said, I agree with Jean Bedord. And there's more. You got rid of the committees, like Legislative Committee, Environmental, Economic Development, and more. You know, there's some ad hoc economic group, but we have no idea what is going on. The city gave the Chamber of Commerce about $50,000 for economic development for to achieve what? I do have a picture here. These are Cupertino's top 25 taxpayers. And as you'll see, only out of the top 25, three are members of the chamber. That's about 12%. Not too good a record. Seems like chamber somewhat irrelevant. There was the I Love Cupertino website that Cupertino invested in for $60,000. That didn't go too well. Here's an RFP, and I don't quite understand this. This is where Cupertino wants to spend more money in making Cupertino great again, I guess.
Thank you. That is your time.
Why isn't the chamber doing this for us? Thanks.
Next, our final speaker in Community Hall is Jenny. Welcome, Jenny.
Hello, everybody. Recently, I talked to some church pastors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So they tell me the number the people go to church is dramatically go down. And, you know, part of it because they teach some good values. So the value of morale and the wisdom and culture went down. What happens in our countries? And we are on the top list of the homeless and the mental illness and drug addicts and also divorce and domestic violence and also jails and courts and a lot of lawyers and violent products of the childrens. Then people thinking, probably, yeah, maybe those people, they may need to be there to fix some problems, right? Because there's a problem there. But you're thinking about if they come from average of the lower of those good things, so how they can fix anything? So one thing to fix some of that, starting from the city hall here, is open door policy and also conspiracy. Conspiracy. When I'm talking about this, look at the picture here, okay? We have a backyard and a structure. It's only some kind of 100 degree, 100 some kind of square foot and 12 feet tall. And then nobody can see from the front, and the direct neighbor don't have any problem with it and no safety issue because it's also new. And then no problem in the rest of the city, and that's the word. But we were taking away the property and the planning and even get told what we're doing by the city also get permit. Not once, and again. And I'm thinking about that picture. And that's a part of how this goes, right? And now we're talking about, people say, okay, because this is the case, there's some kind of case going on and some kind of enforcement going on, we can't talk to you. That's the reason we haven't been able to talk with the city manager, anybody. We're here for one year. We begged, talked to anybody. It's always the people doing hard talk if they can, okay, chance, begging, to the end, taught us a few times maybe. The rest time, don't, because the persecution, prosecution keep going on. So first, we need you guys, stop the persecution, prosecution right away. And also, not keep exploiting victims like us because we are easy target and stop that part. And second, have a certain mutual person and talk to us immediately, right away. And also, because you guys, we select them, and you guys need to bring this up and keep the, pick the balance, not let this thing keep going up, this keep going down. I'm sure you guys don't want to be associated injustice, associated with exploit victims like us, like us easy target, and bring this up and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And Mayor, that was our final speaker in Community Hall. So we have one hand raised on Zoom from San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, City Council. I would like to echo the sentiment from a couple of the prior speakers, Jean Bedord and Rota Frye, that we need to preserve virtual or hybrid meetings for maximum engagement of city residents. City residents that have young families with kids are unable to come and sit at the city hall for hours in the evening to participate in commission meetings or council meetings. That does not mean that they are disengaged from the affairs of the city council and commissions. It is very concerning that the commissions, unilaterally without council input or community input, chose to turn off hybrid attendance and video attendance capabilities. Why was this done? I would urge you to go further to understand what motivated this and how did that happen without input from the public? I hope you're going to restore access at the earliest. I also want to echo the sentiment from prior speakers on BlackBerry Farm. BlackBerry Farm is one of those projects where you can demonstrate efficiency immediately. You can end this agenda item on the work plan and keep BlackBerry Farm as is and save the city hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars where we see the city staff talking about efficiency and taking minutes of your city council time. You can actually save yourself hundreds of hours of time if you catalog the amount of time that has been spent on this agenda. We love our BlackBerry Farm Golf Course as it is. It has a therapeutic effect for both the golfers and the non-golfers. Personally, I love to drive out there, park by the golf course, and take my conference calls, gazing at the golf course. I highly recommend it. It has an extremely de-stressing and relaxing effect. Finally, I want to come back to, on the theme of sports, I want to come back to the Cupertino Sports Center. I want to bring to your attention that prior to COVID, the Cupertino Sports Center used to open at 6:00 a.m. and would stay open till 10:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, I believe. The Cupertino Sports Center after COVID now opens at 8:00 a.m. As you know, residents would like to get in a couple of hours of workout time between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. before they need to get into work. The Sports Center is a facility to bring in revenue, both from residents and non-residents. I encourage you to restore the Sports Center to its hours pre-COVID, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I also encourage you to reopen the teen center or convert that into a ping-pong facility. Ping-pong is extremely popular. Table tennis is a sport of the Asian community. 67% of Cupertino's Asians. Kindly restore the usage of the basement part of the Sports Center to create either a facility for teens like before or convert it into a ping-pong center so that it can be reserved and used for ping-pong. Please spend time visiting these facilities and encouraging sport. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no further speakers? No further speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to close the oral communication session of the meeting. And I thank all the people who speak up, and then thank you for coming. Okay, now we are going to move to Consent Calendar. Items appearing in the consent calendar are considered routine city business and may be approved by one motion. And do we have any consent candidates being pulled?
Yes, we do. Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chow has pulled items five and nine.
Five and nine. Okay. Okay, so items number five and nine will be now placed after the action item.
Pardon, Mayor. I believe I'm allowed to pull one during the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, I would like to pull item 10. I have a fairly quick question on that one. It's the storm drain emergency repair.
Okay, so we have been pulled item number five, nine, and 10. So we're going to open the public comment for items four, six, seven, eight. And if you have comments for the items that's been pulled, please wait until we are getting to the items at the end of the agenda. So any public comments for items number four, six, seven, and eight?
Yes, Mayor. Kathy Helgerson has submitted a speaker card for number six.
Okay. Please.
Yes. Kathy, welcome. And Kathy, you submitted requests for five, nine, and 10, but those have been moved to the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
So six is...
After Action Calendar.
Okay, the senior center. Okay, I'm familiar with the senior center. And I think we need to go out for bid. It's very expensive what you guys are trying to do. And you have to adhere to the bid process. I was a bar in electronics for 35 years, handled many contracts, and I don't see any bid process here. And I think that would help right now, especially with the tax issues that we have problems with. So we need to go out for bid, and I don't know what it's going to take for you guys to do that. You either have to have a single or sole source justification if you're just going to keep using the same vendor all the time. I would suggest that the senior center project may be put off for a while till we find out what's going on with the tax situation. And I'm working on that, trying to get some information so that we can either pull certain projects and put them on hold, unless it's an emergency, which I don't think I read that in the articles, that it was an emergency that the senior center has to be upgraded. And so I looked at the pictures that were shown on the web about the senior, you know, year program, the agenda, and it doesn't look like there's something that can't wait. And nothing's broken. Nobody said there's something that's not operating or, you know, it's a fire hazard. That wasn't said. So I don't know who's decided this. You also paid for a consultant $20,000. That's pretty steep there. I'm sure that we've got people at Public Works or in house that could have done some of this. So when I was working in the industry, if you guys were a company, you couldn't operate this way. You're going to have to change the way you do business to save money. And it's very important now to save money. But I think it's always been important, and we should really look at this. So if anybody could get back to me, I'd like to hear more about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mayor, I see no further speaker card requests or hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm closing the public comment period for Consent Calendar. I'm bringing back to council. May I have a motion to pass the Consent Calendar five? Let me repeat again. Four, six, seven, and eight.
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Sorry, did you mention item five, Mayor?
Yes. Four, five...
No, five was pulled.
Sorry, four, six, seven, eight. Right?
Yes.
Four, six, seven, eight.
I will revise my motion accordingly.
And I will second.
Thank you. And we have a motion second. May I vote by the light?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we are moving to Action Calendar, number 11.
As a point of order, since item 10 is a, requires an emergency declaration, if we could potentially take that first.
We need a vote for that?
That emotion, Councilmember? That is a motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
So the motion is to move item number 10 before the Action Calendar number 11. May I have a vote by light?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we are moving to number 10. Number 10 is Stevens Creek Boulevard, Calabasas Creek Storm Drain Repair Emergency Work Declaration and Authorization for the City Manager to Negotiate and Execute Contract for the Repair Work. I'm going, do we have a presentation?
No, we don't, Mayor. Wait, but we do have Public Works Director Chad Mosley and Susan Michael, CIP Manager, here to answer Councilmember Moore's questions.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. So first, I think it might help if a description of the project was made as an introduction, really briefly. And then people have probably noticed that there's a traffic problem there in the area, and they might be interested in knowing what's happening.
Hello, Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Happy to answer that question. Currently, there's a storm drain line under Stevens Creek Boulevard that outlets into Calabasas Creek. That storm drain line, the last 40, 45 feet, is composed of corrugated metal pipe that was installed in the late '70s. The Public Works Department became aware of some corrosion on that pipe last year, and so we initiated a capital improvement project to have that pipe replaced. Over the last year, I think with the storms, we had... Over the last year, I think with the storms we had over the winter, that pipe has fully collapsed, and so we want to go in there and replace that pipe before the rains start this year to mitigate any further problems that could occur, such as potentially sinkholes or other items. Very good.
Thank you, and through the mayor. So we've got a 54-inch corrugated metal pipe that's completely collapsed underneath the roadway, and it needs to be repaired. And that part, I have no question about. My only question and concern is where the funding is coming from, and because we passed the storm drain parcel tax for about $48 per parcel a few years ago, and I'm trying to understand why we're not using the special revenue fund 230 or 215, the Storm Drain AB-1600 Fund. When I looked and reviewed what those, particularly the Fund 230 was for, it does mention maintenance and repair of the storm drain system and timely proactive maintenance of aging infrastructure to prevent unexpected failure and additional costs. So I'd like to understand why we're not taking the funding from those special revenue funds instead, and I'll mute myself.
Good evening, Councilmember Moore and Councilmembers. I am Susan Michael, CIP manager. Thank you for your question. We did actually try to consider using the storm drain funds. There's three or four of them, actually, but after discussing it with the finance department manager, director, both of them, we decided that we needed to have more time to contemplate and make sure that we were using those funds correctly because there's rules for each of the funds. So in the interest of moving this along quickly, we decided we would go for the, using the capital reserve fund at this point, and we can go back and instigate a transfer later when we have our feet on the ground about how we're doing this.
And through the mayor, so that last part is the important part. So if, so you'll still be doing the research to see if those storm drain dollars can come from either of these revenue funds that we have, and I know that I've asked questions about those before in that it's complicated.
Yes, it is.
How to work. Okay, so we can move the money back out of there later on, and you'll continue researching it, and that concludes my questions. Thank you.
So thank you. If there are no questions from the council, I'd like to open up a public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, we have, we have one request to speak card from Kathy Helgerson in Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Kathy.
Hello. Okay, well, this also has to do with bidding, and it states here that there will be no public bidding process. $880,000 to repair a pipe? What's the matter with you people? Don't you see what's happening here? It's, it's, there's resolutions that, and there's codes, and if you look at the California Code for Public Contract Code, Article 4, Section 20160 to 20175.2, you have to go out for bid. This is a lot of money. There's a lot of fraud that could be happening here, okay? And it has to be public. And I haven't seen the city do this at all, ever, and I've been with this, in this city for 42 years, so I don't know what's going on with you guys, except you have a lot of money and you don't really care, and you're just going to blow $880,000 when we have to pay back taxes that we have, probably have to pay back. I would like someone to look at this, and not the city manager, by the way, sorry, but I have issues with her, and that's coming up on the 30th. She's got a review coming up, and I'm going to be there talking about her, okay? We give her too much power, way too much power, all right? I don't want to assign this to her. We need technical people to come in and look at the bid process that the city has, and maybe, I guess if you're going to spend $20,000 on a consultant on this other project, that maybe you should ask him to come in and take a look at this, too. This is really bad. If you were a company, you couldn't operate this way. So let's pretend you are a company. Let's change the way we think. Let's watch every penny. Let's not throw money away anymore. And it's a good thing, maybe, about this tax thing because it's going to teach us a lesson. Tighten your belts. The economy sucks. We all pay for gas and food and PG&E, and believe me, seniors have it really tough. We're not getting an increase here, all right? We're not, as seniors. So blame it on who you want to blame it on, and go to our congressman, our state senator, and our president, and do something about what they're doing, about what we have to endure here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. I very much appreciate Councilmore's, Councilmember Moore's comments regarding where the money is coming from, and especially now more than ever, it's really important to make sure that we get, that the money that we have in various accounts gets used for the right thing. And I'm not at all surprised that CIP manager Michael is doing due diligence on that. She never ceases, oh, I'm going to say this back, never ceases to amaze me? Did I say that right? Or always ceases to me, always amazes me? I have trouble with double negatives. Anyway, I, I think that she, thank you, staff. You're awesome. Both of you are awesome. So thank you for doing due diligence, and what I would ask the council to do this evening would be for the last city council meet, I think it's reasonable, for the last city council meeting of this year, to report back where those funds are being allocated so we get, we can close the loop on this issue. Thank you for bringing it up, Councilmember Moore, and thank you, staff, for actually anticipating the question. Y'all are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And Mayor, we will move to Zoom. We have two hands raised.
Please.
From San R. and from Louise Sedadi. Welcome, San.
Hello, City Council. Firstly, I want to commend at this opportunity the professionalism of Chad Mosley. Chad has always impressed me with his professionalism, dealing with residents for years and years, and so I have no reason to question or doubt his integrity and his judgment on either the prioritization or the budget or the urgency needed and the method for the funding. So I just want to say that Chad and the Public Works Department do a fantastic job. So just want to give a shout out for Chad. Secondly, I recently had a chance to, to see some emergency repairs on the Regna Creek, I believe, by Bob Road, where over 20 trees were taken down, and the city was not involved in the process. The Valley Water Board seemed to be conducting that process, and when I had a chance to talk to them on behalf of and with the resident that was impacted because she lost 20 trees on her property, it sounded like the Valley Water Board had an emergency declaration and were able to bypass all involvement of the city. So that begs the question, is this co-funded by the Valley Water Board, and is there opportunity to get them to fully or partially fund some of these repairs? So I don't know what involvement they have versus the city. I was quite, quite surprised that the last time around, they were able to take down 20 trees, mature trees, including mature oak trees, without the involvement of processes that the city has to protect our mature foliage and our canopy. So I hope the Valley Water Board has a chance to participate in this project and funding and co-funding it. I agree on the priority and the urgency of this. I hope measures will be taken to expedite it, as well as make sure that traffic issues are eased. I also encourage you, given all of the chaos right now, to temporarily or maybe permanently revisit the no right turn on red at that junction. That whole junction is a mess due to the traffic department creating those bike lanes, and I urge you to look at temporary measures, at least while this project is underway, to ease the traffic and make sure you don't have additional problems caused by all the no right turn on red at that junction. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hello, this is Louise Sedadi, and I wasn't intending to speak tonight because my daughter is getting married in just a few days, and I'm in the middle of wedding preparation. However, I heard something that compelled me to speak up, and there was a resident who was making allegations that our city manager is not to be trusted and that she's not performing well, and I just felt compelled that I had to speak out.
Mayor, wait. I, I, I don't believe this is germane to the agenda topic.
Yes, so this is not on the agenda.
All right, so anyhow, I just was very dismayed with, with the comment. So I will step back then, okay?
Thank you, Louise. Mayor, that was our, no further speakers?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to thank to all the, I'm going to close the public comment and thank all the people who spoke, and I'm going to bring this back to council for discussion. Do we have any discussions? Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Chow.
I want to follow up on something, one of the, can you hear me? Okay, I want to follow up on one of the questions about Valley Water, and I'm going to assume that, that the connection pipe is ours and that Valley Water is, doesn't have funding that's going to be contributing to, to this. But I was curi, first, I'd like to verify that. I'm going to assume that I'm correct, but I'm wondering if the channel itself is owned by Valley Water somehow because it's the creek, even though it's under the, under the road like that. I'm just kind of wondering where the ownership lies in that kind of a situation.
Councilmember Moore, the culvert that Calabasas Creek travels through is owned and maintained by Valley Water. As for the storm drain main, typically the mains are the maintenance responsibility of cities, but we are looking into this a little further to see if there are any agreements regarding this pipe and when it was constructed. So no, not conclusive on any, any agreements, but we're still digging into it, so.
Councilmember Chow, followed by Councilmember Furun.
Okay, I, I asked this at the one-on-one, but I thought it would be good to ask again, just to confirm that there are no other funding sources to support this type of repair for the storm drain issue, and then since we had the big storm earlier this year, there are usually emergency funding for crises. Would this, this might be a result of the big storm we had this year. Could any possible funding be available to address this issue?
As was indicated earlier, we'll, we'll be looking in to see if other, like the APN fees can cover some of these costs. As for emergency funding due to storms, we'll, we'll look into that to see what's available. We're not 100% conclusive that it's all from the storms, but there may be some FEMA emergency funds that we can apply for.
Thank you. And just for our knowledge, this item, in case it's another emergency and we put it out for a regular bid, what would have been the cost, just so we have some idea?
When we originally estimated this, we anticipated the cost to be about $450,000, but the project that we have now due to the emergency situation is very different than what was originally anticipated and estimated. So there is an expanded scope of work to address the situation, and additionally, I think we're, to a certain extent, paying a little bit of a premium to expedite this. The contractor that we've been discussing this work with has been very diligent in investigating it and providing responses so that we can get this turned around very quickly.
So the price is almost doubled, not only because of the emergency nature, but also because the scope is more than earlier estimated because the deterioration is worse than we had anticipated.
That is correct.
Okay, so this year, we had originally budgeted $420,000 for storm drain repair and was, so that would mean we won't do any other storm drain repair for this year, but as I understand, the city did an assessment, many other areas of the storm drain also need the repair. So do we plan to have, do we plan to budget like $420,000 for multiple years, and then would we, what was the original scope of the $420,000 budgeted for this year?
So that $420,000 was to replace this section of pipe that we'll be replacing with the emergency repair. So the 420 was the scope of work that we're moving forward with in this emergency situation. With respect to investigations, we do have a report going out now where we've hired an engineering firm to actually inspect all of our outfalls to verify the condition. That was initiated last year. I don't believe we have that report back yet, but once we get that report, we'll evaluate and find out what additional work may need to happen. This is a concern of ours to, to kind of ensure that our storm drain facilities are in good repair. That is the main utility that we manage as the city of Cupertino, so we want to make sure that we're, we're monitoring that and maintaining it accordingly.
Oh, so I thought there was an earlier report down before we increased the storm drain fee, and that report estimated the amount of maintenance we need, which is, which justified the fee increase.
So there was the storm drain master plan that was done in 2019 that talked about upsizing certain storm drain lines to ensure that we are managing storm capacities properly, and that did have a number of projects in it that, that they had recommended that we move forward with to ensure we're conveying a 10-year storm, which is pretty much industry standard.
Okay, thank you. The member Furun?
Yeah, just by way of response to some of the public comments, I was hoping you could opine on why this is an emergency, why it merits the amount of attention that it's getting, and how that impacts the bidding process.
Yeah, again, briefly, there's a 54-inch storm drain line under Stevens Creek Boulevard. It was corrugated metal pipe that has corroded and collapsed, and with that collapse, there's been a void that's been created around the pipe. That void is underneath Stevens Creek Boulevard, and there are serious concerns that a sinkhole could form, so we want to have that addressed quickly to, to bring all lanes back up to standard, to ensure public safety. And part of the concern is if we don't get this done before winters, that void could get bigger and could potentially affect the entire street. So it's really out of an abundance of caution to ensure that we're providing public facilities that are safe for our residents.
Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was, if this gets approved today, what are your timelines? When do you expect to start? When do you expect it to finish? And my second question was, you've suggested an alternate way to access the businesses in the areas that, in the area that's affected by the, this project. So have those businesses been notified, and is there sufficient parking, parking accommodations made for them?
Yes, so to, to start with, when we plan to start, I'm really kind of hoping the contractor can start tomorrow at 10 o'clock in the morning. We're kind of waiting for the school traffic to go so that we can get going. When we ask for an emergency, we're being serious here. We want to move this forward. We intend, we, we're hoping that the work will be about four weeks, and then we can at least have one of the lanes back open, and we're hoping the project will be complete in five weeks. We're, we're trying to get lanes back open relatively quickly. We are moving on this. With respect to the businesses, there are a handful of businesses on the south side of Stevens Creek that are, would be impacted by the closure of Stevens Creek. Those businesses can be accessed off of Miller Avenue. There is a driveway on the east side of Miller, just south of the Jiffy Lube, that would provide access to all of those properties back there, each of those businesses. We are, we do intend to have a map up on our webpage, hopefully tomorrow, but definitely later this week, that kind of shows where that access is and does also further explain the detour.
Just a quick follow-up. So if, as you say, the work will start tomorrow, the businesses will be prepared to manage these timelines?
And I apologize, the businesses have all been notified, yes, and most notably, the Bank of America. Uh, and most notably, uh, the Bank of America there is the business that has the most traffic, and we have spoken with their manager about the situation.
Great, thank you very much.
The member Moore, you have lights on again. You've got about two minutes.
Um, yes, just a quick question so people know. How many lanes are open right now eastbound?
Uh, one lane.
One lane, okay. And so when this construction starts, we're, there will be a time when all those lanes are gonna, all the eastbound lanes will need to be closed.
There will be about a four-week period where all eastbound lanes are closed. There will be a detour up North Wolf to Valco and south on Tantow to Stevens Creek again. Um, with this, uh, we, you know, our traffic manager will be looking to optimize timing of the signals to kinda allow that flow of traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow?
Quickly, have we notified the schools? This will affect their, um, pickup and drop-off and parents.
Uh, Cupertino High School has been notified of, uh, of this, uh, closure. Um, they are aware of that, and, uh, we've not reached out to parents directly. We've put information on the website, and, um, I know that the sc-, my understanding is the school district's, we're gonna notify the parents.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I will speak about VTA briefly. Um, that VTA has been notified and they've modified their, uh, routes. Um, the new stops are being, uh, situated on Wolf Road, and they have notified the public with signage at the bus stops.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna make a very brief comment. I wanna comment on my, our staff, um, Chad and Susan for answering all the questions on the fly, because I have full confidence that, um, you could really, doing a good, really good job, and also had thought about all the possible, possibilities. So, um, I'm pretty sure you're gonna give us update if, um, something else that we need to know. So I'm gonna, um, ask for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the, the result, sorry. Recommended action.
Have a second, please?
Second.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Chow, second by, uh, Councilmember Froom. And may we have, uh, voting by lights, please?
Pardon, we, we can still have a, a, a moment here. I, I just wanna verify, we do have a CEQA exemption under, um, fifteen-two-six-nine subdivision B. I would, I, I would like to understand what that exemption is. Is that an, is it because it's an emergency, or what is the nature of that exemption?
There, there, I mean, there's certainly several exemptions that would, that would apply, at very least. The, the exemption for, um, uh, maintenance of an existing facility would apply here.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, may we vote by light, please?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Um, before we move to action calendar number eleven, do we need a recess? Anybody needs a five-minute break?
Five minutes.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think councilmembers are coming back. We're gonna reconvene the meeting. And we are moving to action item number eleven. Establish a general fund sales tax repayment reserve. Do we have staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor Way, we have AMN Services Director Christina Alfaro and also Finance Manager Jonathan Orozco to, um, provide a presentation to you. Go for it.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Um, I wanna start before I get into the presentation. Um, I just wanna take a brief moment to say, we're gonna be presenting a lot of information to you this evening. Um, although the only recommendation we have for council this evening is to set up the, uh, sales tax repayment reserve. You will be tempted to try to solve the problem this evening, uh, but please hold tight till the end of our presentation. We will provide you a roadmap of kind of the next, uh, several touchpoints on the budget process, uh, where you'll have the opportunity to do that. So with that, if a video team could share my screen unplugged, thank you. There it is. Alright, hold on.
A very quick question, okay? The presentation is not on the website. I usually like to follow along.
I'm s- Uh, it is, uh, through the mayor. So the presentation was included in the supplemental and also the desk item just, uh, today.
Oh, but not on the website?
It's, the presentation is located where the agenda is posted, in the same location?
Oh, I need to refresh, sorry.
So, uh, on the agenda for this evening, um, we'll go over updates from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, or CDTFA, uh, sales tax audit. We'll talk about how those, uh, updates are, are changing our forecast assumptions. We'll go into what the impacts, uh, those assumptions are having in our forecast. Uh, then we'll introduce different strategies, um, for how we're balancing the budget. And then we'll go into next steps and recommended actions for the council. So jumping right in, just wanted to provide an update, or, uh, same timeline we presented back in April about kind of how we got to where we are today, um, in terms of what's happening with the CDTFA. Last we left you, we had verbally heard from CDTFA, uh, about the determination they were going to make, and the city was told to, uh, expect a follow-up within four to six months. Since then, uh, city staff has been hard at work trying to limit the, um, impacts that this would have to our budget at the state level, um, both to the city and to the county, and has been unsuccessful. And that's one of the reasons we're here before you tonight, requesting, uh, you to create this committed reserve. In addition to, uh, the unsuccessful efforts at the state level, um, we realize that statewide changes to CDTFA regulations that would assist our situation are proving difficult to impossible as it would change the way sales taxes are, um, remitted throughout the whole state of California. Another point why we're here before you this evening is there have been unfavorable decisions from the Office of Tax Appeals um, regarding other audits that are, uh, not exactly the same but similar to the issues in our audit. And lastly, we understand, uh, from those cases that final resolution could be years away, which means we need to act, uh, now as opposed to waiting. And so what does that mean for our forecast? So I wanted to, the, the first column on your left just reminds you of where we were as of the, just a few months ago in June twenty-twenty-three. Our forecast included facility debt being paid off in, uh, twenty-twenty-nine-thirty. Uh, this is savings of about two and a half million dollars annually to the budget. There were no additional development projects included that hadn't already been permitted. Um, the forecast, as a reminder, concludes, um, a recession, which for us is no growth in our revenue categories in fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five and twenty-eight-twenty-nine, uh, for all revenues. Uh, we also want to pay close attention to the last two bullets, which is, we had minimum funding of about five hundred thousand for special projects. This is well below where we have funded, uh, this item in the past, and no transfers to the capital reserve fund. And this is important because we do have aging infrastructure and the need for capital projects, um, will more than likely continue. In terms of our new assumption in the budget, we haven't changed those last two bullets, um, as of yet. Uh, but we did make a change in budget strategy, which is really to shift from the use of vacancies to really looking at a service-level reduction model. And I'll talk a little bit about, more about this as we go through the presentation. Um, we also revised our sales tax forecast down about two million dollars from eleven point four to nine point four million. And this is due to, um, conversations we've had with, uh, HDL, the city's sales tax consultant. And it's really driven by the last two quarters of sales tax revenue coming in lower than we hadn't originally anticipated. And for all these reasons, we're before you this evening to create, ask you to create a committed fund balance reserve uh, for the sales tax, uh, payback of fifty-six and a half million dollars. And this would cover the payback period from April twenty-twenty-one through June twenty-twenty-three. Um, just a brief moment, talk about what a committed fund balance is. So committed fund balance, um, is when, uh, the city council, uh, puts a restriction on dollars, uh, in our fund balance for a specific use. That restriction can only be lifted by the city council as well. So moving into our forecast, uh, this slide here kinda shows you, uh, a couple of things. Uh, the first is it shows you our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-three-twenty-four adopted, uh, budget, uh, general fund reserves. Overall, I wanna, uh, call your attention to the bottom of the screen where the total is. Total fund balance was estimated at ninety-five point three million back in June when we adopted the budget. It was made up primarily of our unassigned fund balance at forty-four point one million, capital projects reserve at ten million. And this reserve is, uh, separate and apart from the capital reserve fund. This is a reserve in the general fund, and the capital reserve fund is its own fund. Um, we also had the Section one-fifteen trusts, economic uncertainty reserve, which is made up of two months of ex-, uh, budgeted expenditures, and that's how we come up with that number. Uh, now, this evening, what we're recommending is that we reduce the unassigned, uh, unassigned fund balance down to three point six million dollars, so down forty and a half million dollars. That we completely eliminate the capital project reserve in the general fund. That gets us an additional ten million dollars. We leave the Section one-fifteen pension trust untouched, uh, for now. And the economic uncertainty reserve drops down to eighteen million, reducing it by six million. And this will align, uh, where we think expenditures will end up when we're, um, um, through the service-level reductions. So overall, that's how we create the fifty-six and a half million. I wanna point you to the total under fiscal year twenty-three-twenty-four amended. Total fund balance remains the same. We're simply moving the dollars, restricting the dollars into a specific reserve, uh, for future use. But we are not asking you to use the dollars this evening. If we did want you to use those dollars, we would have to come back and get that authority from you. The last piece on this slide is the capital project fund reserve. So this includes funds four-twenty and four-twenty-nine. Uh, we estimated as of adopted budget that we would have thirteen and a half million dollars. We'll continue to report on this reserve as part of our quarterly reports. But currently, it's said it remains untouched. And so what that means for us is this is, you might remember this chart. Um, there are a couple of things I wanna make sure I call your attention to on this chart. This was the forecast chart we presented to council in June of twenty-twenty-three. Um, so one of the, the main things I really wanna point out is, the very last year, twenty-thirty-three, we still had a five-point-four-million-dollar fund balance. The remainder of the red bars are the deficits. We had originally planned to use unassigned fund balance to create a soft landing. So now, as we go into our updated forecast, I still wanna call your attention over to the far right to fiscal year twenty-thirty-three, and you can see that that deficit has more than doubled. Uh, also, uh, we, uh, as you saw on the previous table, have limited fund balance to really have the soft landing we had hoped for, which means we need to accelerate our reductions. Um, and, and we'll have less of a soft landing as we navigate this budget shortfall. So how do we go about balancing the budget? I already told you, I don't have all the answers tonight. We're not gonna solve the problem this evening. Um, but we did want to talk a little bit about some of the structure that we, uh, will have in place. First, we know that we need ongoing reductions. This is a structural deficit, which means ongoing, our expenditures exceed our revenues coming in. We currently estimate the general fund budgets need to be reduced by about twenty-three percent, or about fifteen million dollars ongoing. And we also continue to have the need to identify revenue enhancements. As you are all aware, there are really only two ways to balance your budget. You figure out how to bring your expenses down, or you figure out how to bring more revenue in. So a little bit about our budget strategy shift and what council can expect. So we have asked departments to begin preparing, uh, service-level reduction proposals. So this will be based on what services would be reduced, the total cost of the service for council's consideration. Of course, position reductions are going to be an outcome of this exercise. Um, we've also gone in and excluded, uh, essential items, things like insurance and utilities that were required to cover. We also excluded any programs that completely cost for cover. So if you bring in enough to cover your expenses, you're excluded from these reductions. We're also exploring alternate service delivery models, whether that could be sponsorships for events or partnering with other agencies, uh, to complete, um, tasks that need to be done. We're also looking at implementing strategic reductions, so making sure the reductions that we're targeting make sense and make sure that that's a reduction we can maintain over the long term. And lastly, we still have on here to continue to be an employer of choice. And this is really driven by the high level of customer service that, uh, Cupertino residents have become accustomed to. We need to make sure we stay competitive and we're able to recruit and retain a world-class workforce. Revenue enhancements, this is the other piece of it. We're not gonna spend too much time on this slide. Just as a reminder, we are still working toward, uh, revenue tax measures. Um, departments are looking at potential sponsorships. We continue to look for grant opportunities and a fee schedule. An updated, uh, fee study will be coming to council, um, uh, likely in January. If you want more information about any of these revenue enhancements, they can be found on page one-ninety of the adopted budget. So lastly, next steps and recommended action. Um, this chart here before you shows our regular quarterly reporting to council on the budget. So in November, in February, um, and in May. We've also added two additional dates here. We have a January date, um, to update council uh, on where we are with the budget situation, and also another date in April. Um, this is kind of providing a, a whole overview of how often we'll be coming before council, just specifically on budget updates, like the quarterlies or the update that I'm giving this evening. Uh, in the next slide, what you'll see is a roadmap to how we get to fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five adopted budget and to, uh, balancing the budget. The current, the first little, uh, uh, spot there with the red outline, that's where we are this evening. But as you can see, over the course of the next few months, we will be before council on a monthly basis covering different components that are going to be impacting the budget. In addition, we have a community, uh, budget meeting scheduled for January, and another community budget meeting scheduled in March. All of these pieces will add up to get us to where we are in the budget. And I just wanna take a moment to pause and say, this is, um, for someone who's been with the city for ten years, this is the most touchpoints I have ever seen, um, in coming to a budget presentation. And that really shows our commitment. We wanna be out front. We wanna continue to communicate with our council, with our residents, with our employees of what our situation is, and if it's changing and how it may impact everyone. With that, the recommended action before you is on the slide. I won't, um, read it off to you. Um, and that concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I'd like to put it back for the council for questions. This is a five-minute for questions for the staff presentation. Um, anybody wanna go first? If not, okay. Uh, council, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, so today's action, uh, all that you're doing is creating, uh, a separate, uh, contingency fund, uh, taking funds from other contingency reserve funds.
That's correct.
Okay. So you're not, uh, one of your earliest slides, you talked about position reductions. And then you followed up by saying, uh, if you, if you could just go back to that slide, uh, maybe two, two slides ago.
So, so Vice Mayor, as Christina's trying to pull up the slide, I'll provide some explanation. So, um, we understand that the only ask before council tonight is to set aside the restrictive fund. But it wouldn't be fair if we don't provide you an overview of where we are. Um, and like Christina said, the last two slides are pretty telling. There's gonna be monthly milestone in terms of what council needs to do. Um, so we're not quite ready to propose any reduction in positions yet. However, with the service-level reduction, this may inadvertently, um, become an outcome for a position reduction.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I can buy more time, Christina, for you to-
Uh, one of the questions I, uh, asked staff, and, uh, I did get an answer, uh, was about the impact to the community as a result of today's action. And my understanding is that there will not be any immediate impact as a result of today. I mean, it's to be expected that there will be impact as we move forward in this process, but-
That, that is correct. So today's action, if council approves the, uh, restriction, um, to set aside money, there will be no impact to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I see councilmember, are you ready? Yeah, okay, please. Before we get into-
I believe, uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, this was the slide you were referring to?
Yes, and I think I have an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to Councilmember Chow, then followed by Councilmember Froom. We're going to council member Chow then followed by council member Fron.
First of all, there, we submitted some questions to a Monday, but some of them were not answered because it's not germane to the agenda item today. But they are, they are germane to the upcoming budget discussion. So I would like, I wonder if we could get those answers in subsequent date, on maybe the next meeting or the during the, or in the next budget discussion.
So, so the mayor will have a Q-one budget update coming to council in November. We'll make sure that some of the questions that you have asked will be invited, will be included in that staff report.
Okay, so one of my question was why the, the, the look back starts from April twenty twenty-one? And I thank you, the staff, for the answer. It says that because I thought maybe there was some tax law change on that date. Turns out it's not. It's likely there is a twenty, what was that? There is eight-quarter look back that's allowed. So they are looking back for eight quarters. Sorry, I had some other question of, I'll, I'll come back.
Okay, council member Fron.
So we're being asked to squirrel away about fifty-six million dollars at this time and then presumably to augment that as we receive sales tax revenues that perhaps are in dispute. That's correct, yes?
That's correct. When we bring those numbers on a quarterly basis as part of our quarterly reporting.
Got it. So it's a really significant amount of money, obviously. Do we have any legal capacity, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for the city attorney, to invest that money and to use any of the proceeds from it? Or would we be barred by some other doctrine like unjust enrichment, et cetera?
It's our understanding we'd still be able to hold on to the dollars, invest the dollars and retain the interest.
Okay, all right. Only just interest, or can we be more creative with the investment?
So we are limited by the creativity of our investments under our investment policy in California law. But we are actively working with Chandler Asset Management, who handles our investments to make sure we have the best strategy forward to get the biggest return we can.
Okay, thank you so much.
Council member Moore, followed by council member Chow.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any document that we can share with the public to let them know that this audit is occurring?
No, we don't.
Okay. So looking at the fifty-six point five million and how it was calculated so that I can follow along at home, it's with the eight-quarter look back, what was, what was the trigger date? Because to me, it's, I thought it would be perhaps from December two thousand and twenty-one, looking back.
I'm sorry, do you repeat the question? I was sliding, going back through, through slides.
Oh, so how did, with the fifty-six point five million calculation, I'm trying to understand what was the, what was the date that the look back went from? So and was it eight quarters from this, this event happened? And what was this event that they are using?
Sorry, thank you, I understand the question now. There is a letter of determination. So it's a point, it's a date in time when CDTFA kind of makes their decision and they say, as of this point, going back, these are, these are the dates that cover. They're allowed to go back eight quarters or two years. And so it was basically the date they made their determination, going back eight quarters. That's how they, they looked at the timeframe. We add to it to get through the end of the fiscal year because this new budget then covers us fiscal years going forward.
Okay. Has this entity been paid their remittances this year?
I don't know if I'm allowed to answer that publicly.
I can see the accounts payable, so I, I know what the answer is.
So there are several payments that have not been made at this time.
Okay. So money was already been put aside before we have a final determination. Where has, where has it gone? So we, we haven't remitted. Where is it, is it with Chandler already? Where, where'd it go? Can, may I ask that?
So the dollars are still currently in our bank account. They're still as part of our cash.
Okay, that one, okay. So I will ask this one. There are several online sources of information available regarding sales tax allocation and there are simple flow charts available. What was particularly difficult to result in a fifty-six point five million dollar error by some entity? Does anyone know the answer to that?
I don't believe we do.
Okay. So will there be an increase into our savings with Chandler? So if right now, I, it sounds as though you're waiting for permission to move this money perhaps into Chandler? Or, or not?
No, not, not necessarily waiting for the permission. We work with Chandler hand in hand, so they understand kind of how the dollars, when we might need the dollars, what's, we work with them on what's the best strategy. So we're just still kind of working with them to understand timing wise, what makes the most sense in terms of duration of our investments and where we should be putting our dollars should we need to tap these dollars sooner than anticipated.
So when would we be making the choice? Because we still would have the choice of whether it, this, this money would go to Chandler or, or if it would go to treasuries somewhere else. When is that decision going to be made?
That should be happening within the next few months.
So it would come to council and that question will be asked?
So no, when it comes to investments, the treasurer has the authority to move the funds around within the investment policy.
The slide called roadmap, it seems to, I appreciate the slide, but it seems to indicate a few things that go a bit off of the agenda subject and recommended action. Because if we were to discuss some of these items on here, such as, oh, I don't know, the BlackBerry Farm update or anything, we could get, go off topic pretty quickly. So I appreciate this chart, but it seems as though through the attorney, I, through the mayor and a question for the attorney, are we allowed to speak to some of these items that are on the roadmap?
Council member Moore, I would agree that sort of an extended discussion of, of any of these future items would be outside the scope of the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and council member Chow?
Thank you. So I think this is a question from a community member that, do we have to use Chandler for this pretty significant investment of fifty-six million dollars? Or is there a bidding process that we could possibly find a better way, more profitable way to invest?
So we did do a bidding process to bring Chandler on a few years ago. We feel like their performance has been good. We are limited as a government agency in what we can invest. So at this point, we, staff doesn't see a reason for, to change investment advisors. It's something we may look to into the future. The last time the investment advisors were changed is we were having some issues with how they were investing the dollars.
So in case when we need to pay this to, to CDTFA, maybe in two years, would we be required to pay a certain interest on top since we are paying back four years later? So what, how would they calculate the actual payment?
The actual payment back to CDTFA? It would be remitted on a quarterly basis as part, as a reduction to our sales tax. As far as we know, the number that we're setting aside is sufficient to make that pay back. So what we would do is we would, CDTFA would remit almost nothing to us for sales tax and we would use this reserve to offset that loss in revenue.
What I mean, would they add interest to, to the payment since we are paying back later than, since we are holding it and we are investing it, right? So would they be requesting a certain interest on top of the payment?
At this, at this time, the projections do not include an interest repayment. We can discuss that more in a closed session when we consider this item in closed session.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the answer that about the, the day, starting date. I'm still a little confused. The answer from the staff was per CDTFA regulations, once misallocation is substantiated, the look back period is eight quarters or two years prior to calculate, calculate the repayment amount. And you mentioned that it's usually to eight quarters from the determination date. But I thought we have not received a determination letter yet.
We have.
We have?
We have.
If, if we have, wouldn't that be a public letter?
It's, it's not, no, it's not a public letter. It's, it's not the determination date. It's essentially the date of, of discovery by, by CDTFA. And there's, there's, there's a two-year limit, eight-quarter limitation period from which they can look back from that date of discovery.
On what date did we receive this discovery letter?
The letter doesn't, the letter isn't provided to, it's not provided to Cupertino. It's provided to the taxpayer.
And so that's around April two thousand and twenty-three? So we count eight quarters back to April two thousand and twenty-one?
I will have to defer to Christina on that, yeah.
So the letter was provided to taxpayers. Oh, so this letter is still confidential?
Yes.
So we know there is a, a letter. So at what point will some document be available that's can be pub, the public can view?
If, if we get to an office of tax appeal opinion, those are generally public, public documents.
So would a final determination letter from CDTFA be public?
No.
No.
So that won't be public either?
No.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Moore, you have twenty-two seconds.
Okay, to, thank you, mayor. To continue on with the council member Chow's line of thinking there. So are you saying that an entity were, was given their determination letter in April and we're just now essentially dealing with it? I, I, I thought that we were waiting around still, that it would be months and that this, this letter was going to arrive any day. Are you saying that they, it's already happened in April?
So I mean, we've obviously been dealing with this for quite a while at this point. So this is just, this is just a, a new adjustment based on new information.
Pardon, but the new information has nothing to do with Cupertino. It's, it's extraneous activities going on and results of other things.
Well, the new, the new information projects future revenues and liability, affects future revenues and liabilities of the city of Cupertino.
But we're not waiting for a letter anymore. We, the, the letter already happened in April.
The letter, we, that, that's not quite true. But, but I'm afraid we're getting into confidential information.
Interesting.
So I'd like to see your attorney to explain the confidentiality of this issue. I think the public and, you know, council members are kind of confused. So maybe you could let us know why CDTFA's, you know, investigation started with a lot of other cities, but they are being confidential in certain regulations.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the revenue and taxation code provides that taxpayer information submitted to, to CDTFA is confidential and that, that there are limited numbers of people in the, the cities that receive the taxes that risk, that can be authorized to receive that information on a need-to-know basis. But generally, the, this, both, both the, the proceeding with the taxpayer and then the petition in front of CDTFA is, is, is a confidential proceeding. So we're limited as to what we can say about it in public.
Thank you for the explanation because I think the public and the council need to hear that and so that we're not being, you know, not continuing to say, why are you keeping this from the public? So thank you very much. So I don't have any further questions. And if no questions, I'd like to open up a public comment.
Yes, mayor, we have one speaker card for community hall from Kathy Helgerson. And I see no hands raised on Zoom. Anyone wishing to comment on this item, please submit a card in the next nine minutes or raise your hand.
Okay, there's no transparency here, okay? And this is wrong. The public wants to know. If you have to have meetings, have them. Let us know what's going on here. I do not want you to approve this budget, whatever you're doing, the way they're doing it. Don't approve this tonight. You're not transparent and we need to know, okay? The CDTFA should be getting back to us and they're not. And I don't know why the lawyer isn't doing something about that because he needs to. We cannot get any information. What's happened is the old rules, because of the internet, that screws everything up. We don't have new rules. There's no new legislation to cover the new rules, to cover the internet and all of the expenses. Apple's involved in this and we don't even have the contract that you guys have with Apple. That's, that's, you can't even get that either. Why can't we get that? That should be public information. We need to know the mechanics. You guys don't even know the mechanics. They're not letting you know the mechanics, okay? You need to call up the tax people and say, we are city council and we want to know what's going on here. It's not confidential to you guys. Why is it confidential anyways? Okay, we need to know. And if it needs to be a lawsuit from our legal department here, or get some other lawyers or whatever you want to do, this is not just this fifty-six thousand. This is ongoing. Okay, these are, excuse me? These are regulations that need to change. You need to go to our congressman or state senator, whoever, and do new legislation to cover this internet charge, okay? And then figure out how they're, they're going to deviate out. Is Apple responsible? I don't know. Are we responsible? Are people that work for the city that didn't catch this? All of a sudden, boom, we've got to get this money, put it in the bank and draw interest. We don't get the interest either. You guys have to take the time to look at this and you have to use your force and your power to get what you need, okay? Whether it be the tax people or our lawyers or whoever. This is your job to do that. I can't even get through to these people. You can't find them, you know? And it's confidential. Why is it confidential? It's all out in the open. Have meetings with the public. We need to see what's going on here. That's, we're entitled. This is, we're suffering because of this. This is wrong. Our city is suffering. Please do something about this. Don't sit there and take, you know, you're not even sure what's going on, okay? Kitty, please do something, honey. Because you're the one that I really went to. I went to you because I think you can do it if you set your mind to it. And get your lawyers over here. Get more lawyers. Hire more lawyers. Go after these people. You know, this is our, this is our money. We pay taxes and this is our money. And we don't want them to steal our money from us and that's what they're doing. So I want you to go and do this, all right? I will be contacting you guys again, all right?
Thank you, Kathy, that is your turn. Thank you, you're muted now. Next, we have Ruta Frye. Welcome, Ruta.
Hi, is this new fund required by the CDTFA? From what I've been seeing the last couple of years is that we've been stockpiling money in the unassigned fund. It's been brought up today. Is Chandler the right vehicle for investment? One of my concerns is we're putting all our eggs in one basket. Well, not completely, but as far as these sort of semi-long-term investments, it's all with Chandler. We've got money with US Bank and some other places. So here's the, here's the investment agreement with Chandler. And it, it says that the city may, at its option and the discretion of the city manager, exercise up to two one-year extensions. I started looking because I kind of got curious about that, this. And so in looking, starting to look through the extensions, there are some signatures on these things, but there's no, there's no city managers signing these things for the extensions of Chandler. And from what I can tell, the council needs to appoint the treasurer, but a treasurer hasn't been appointed in quite some time. So I do have some concerns about Chan, just the whole process of having Chandler on board. I, I do think that it is a good idea to, if we're going to carve out this fund, to have it invested by somebody else. Not, not because I necessarily have anything against Chandler, but I think it's, it's good to diversify. You know, I'm, I'm really worried about how this whole thing has come about because we know. about this going on two years. If somebody told me, you know, hey, you know what, we're putting money in your bank account, but it might not belong to you. I mean, I'd start saving. And what I've seen the city do is spend, spend, spend. And by the way, for the public who wants to really understand, get a good understanding of what's going on, just Google Bloomberg, Apple, tax, Cupertino. There's a lot of articles, many of them written by Laura Mahoney, who's been following this tax issue for quite some time. And frankly, when looking at it and looking at the arguments as to why Cupertino should not have, maybe shouldn't have been getting this money, it actually makes quite a bit of sense. So I'm really concerned that there wasn't anybody who was kind of weighing this. It's like, oh, maybe Cupertino should not have been getting this money. Maybe we should be saving our money instead of spending it. So now we're looking into having it come out of us, the taxpayers' pockets. So two things on this. One, you know, there's a lot of cities around here, they're doing head tax, okay? It's not going to help everything. Mountain View, 150 bucks a head, all right? That's going to get us more than where we are at now. And I, and the thing is, is that businesses do cost us to maintain them. The other message I have is shop Cupertino, shop Cupertino until you drop. For every hundred bucks you spend in Cupertino, a dollar goes to Cupertino.
Thank you, Rhoda, for your time. You're muted now. Thank you. Mayor, we have one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, San.
Yes, hello, City Council. I was a little surprised to hear you have an investment advisor that will be investing the rather large sum of money. I would hope that we are conservative with the public tax dollars that are being set aside in this reserve. It's a good time to remind ourselves that the T-bills are yielding 5.3% and are probably as safe, as safe as it gets. So I hope we are as conservative as we can be. I don't know what the investment advisor charges on fees, but that's not abnormal to have a 0.5% fees for investment advisors. And at a time when the markets overvalue or drawdowns are expected. So I certainly hope that we are taking the most conservative view, which is T-bills and six-month or 12-month T-bill or a ladder of T-bills that are three months or six months apart is going to give us the liquidity we need at a 5.3% return on principal. So I hope you're taking a careful, conservative look and not a creative look. I was allowed to hear the term creative used. I don't know what the council member meant when he said creative, but public tax dollars at this scale, I hope you're conservative with that. We don't want to see a drawdown on that due to poor investment decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no further speakers?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment and thanks for all the comments from the public. So I'm going to put it back to council for five minutes each for discussions. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. So when I look at the August Fund number 420, Capital Improvement Fund, it's showing a beginning balance of 27 million, roughly the same at the ending balance for August 31st. However, the report that we just saw had the Fund 420 at 13.1 million and I'd like to understand that discrepancy for one. The next is, what's the, what investment policy, and maybe this is within the materials, what investment policy is this money going to be subject to? And that's it for right now.
For the first question in terms of fund balance, the treasurer's report is a point in time as dollars are coming in and out of the city for the month. The number we're giving you is the projected number where we're anticipated to end the fiscal year. I'm sorry, and the second question was about the investment, there's an investment policy that comes to council on an annual basis, I believe November or December, that talks about the investment of city funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll ask the question to follow up with Councilmember Moore's question. So the investment policy is the guidelines that you, as our finance team, that invests our money in addition to this part, but also other parts of money? Is that the guideline that you follow for all investment?
Correct. And they're primarily set by the state and they're very restrictive in terms because we're really focused on safety and liquidity when it comes to the investments of the city.
Okay, is there any flexibility in?
There are ranges on which we can invest, but it is, again, very, very restrictive.
Okay, so we will be reviewing it in November or December?
It just comes on an annual basis. So if once I verify those dates, it does need to come annually to the city council.
Okay, thank you. The questions from council members or Vice Mayor Mohan, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to get back to what we're supposed to be doing today, all you're doing is moving, creating one fund by taking funds from other contingency reserves. So, right?
That's correct.
So the questions regarding investment by Chandler, the same, there's nothing new that's going to happen with this new part of money, right? Chandler invested the previous funds and all we're doing is just giving it a new name and a new fund.
That's correct. All those funds are currently with the city and Chandler is currently investing them.
Right. And just wanted to make a point that we are not going to be able to solve budget problems on the basis of interest. Interest can be, you know, high or low, but our problems are considerably more substantial or significant than what could be solved by interest manipulation or not so much manipulation. What's another word for manipulation? Investment. So that's the point I wanted to make, that as you pointed out, Director Alfaro, we are limited by the policy which stresses safety and liquidity. Someone, I think a member of the public mentioned something about creativity. I don't think Chandler is going to be taking, doing anything too creative with the funds that they are expected to invest. So my point is by creating the special sales tax repayment reserve, nothing significantly changes in terms of our investment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. Do we have any more questions? If not, I would like to entertain a motion, please. Councilmember Chow?
I really thank you for the roadmap on that upcoming. That's really helpful. And I see that Blackberry Farm and City Hall are on the roadmap. I wonder if we should also consider other items such as senior center, sports center expenditures. These have been brought up by the community members a few times. And Blackberry Farm, beside the golf course, and McLaren Ranch, and field maintenance of school sites. That have been, the cost of that have been brought up also by both community members and school board members. And maybe if in the November budget update, we could talk about a plan to address, look at different buckets through, over this, as part of the roadmap until in this year. That would be great. And thank you, Rhoda, for mentioning that article, Bloomberg, Cupertino. I looked it up. It's, it actually, that article provided more information than the, than the staff report. So I will read part of it. It includes the link to the city's agreement with Apple and a revised agreement in 2013 with Apple. And it also mentioned, which is one of the questions I asked the staff, and it mentioned that Apple also needs to pay back about $20 million. And so this is an article with.
Councilmember Chow, I mean, I do understand that this is, this information's been reported publicly, but we are, we're doing our best not to disclose confidential taxpayer information from the dais.
Oh, so these are confidential even though it's in the news report?
It's, the identity of the taxpayer and the financial information of the taxpayer is confidential per the revenue and taxation code. I do understand that it's, there's been public reporting on this and so it's, it's fair to be confused about it, but.
Oh, by including this kind of agreement where identified as taxpayers. You are right. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, so I'm wondering what the impact is in, for reducing the unassigned fund balance from the 44.1 down to the 3.6 million dollars. Is that going to affect capital improvements, things that we might have wanted to continue on for projects that were already in the works, that maybe were in the design phase, looking at whether or not we would be able to fund the actual project?
So all of the projects the council has already been approved, as part of the budget and CIP process, we fully fund those projects upon approval. So any projects that council has already approved are fully funded and the dollars have already been transferred. What this means in terms of the unassigned is a couple of things. The first is it really limits our ability to have that soft landing on a go-forward basis with our budget because that number has been so significantly reduced. The second thing that it does is any budget, any budget reports or any council items that come requesting the use of fund balance would further deteriorate that fund. It really gives us much smaller wiggle room in terms of if there were an emergency that we need to go in and repair, those dollars are just much lower. We still have the economic uncertainty reserve. So if something major were to happen, we could still tap into that fund. The policy does require if we tap into the economic uncertainty reserve, that we have a plan for repayment, given the city's current financial situation. That plan would be difficult to come up with the dollars for how we would repay back that fund.
Through the mayor, I still need to clarify this. So we have projects which are just in the design phase and the actual funding of the, of the build has not been, it hasn't been allocated. So we just don't have that money.
Correct. So we also have the capital reserve fund, so 420, 420. There are some dollars there, but in our current forecast, those dollars are meant to last the next 10 years, which I mentioned in the presentation, we understand that that's not a realistic number and we'll be coming back to council with probably a different potential of funding CIPs into the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
How much time I have? Okay, so thank you for mentioning that the already approved, funded project will still be funded. But keep in mind that these projects are funded by money we shouldn't have because they probably were funded after April, April 2021. And we had a big increase in our revenue because of all the online sales during COVID. As a result, I think we should revisit this even funded project, especially the ones that's in the design phase. And since we probably won't have money to construct it. So please include in the roadmap to revisit as early as possible the funded project and prioritize them so that we don't spend more, even if it's already funded. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussions? If not, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll move the recommended action.
May I have a second, please?
Happy to second.
Okay, so it's being moved by Councilmember Frum, seconded by Councilmember Chow. If there's no further discussions, let's vote by lights, please.
The motion carries with more abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are moving to agenda item number five, followed by number nine. Do we need a recess? Nope. Okay, let's move to agenda number five. Agenda number five's Updates to the Policies and Guidelines on Sister Cities, Friendship Cities, and International Delegations. Do we have a staff report?
We have a staff report in your packet, Mayor Way. We do not have a presentation. Myself and Tina Kapoor, the deputy city manager, will be here to answer any questions. I understand that Councilmember Chow pulled the item. We're here to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chow, would you like to start this? Question for five minutes each, then I'll open up a public comment.
I guess first question is, was this item on the work program of this year?
No, it's not.
And since it's not on the work program, the council procedures menu requires that we, and then I think how much staff time was spent interviewing the sister cities and reviewing the policies, I think from 13 other cities. Extensive research was done.
I believe, great questions. I believe all the answers I've provided to you in the supplemental information.
Yeah, could you please repeat them here?
Sure, more than happy to. So it's discussed in April and I understand that there was a desire from council prior to this April to update a sister city policy. And his commitment was made to council in April during the most recent sister city trip, that there were some clarifications and confusion regarding the current policy pertaining to sister city and friendship city, which is the reason why we're providing the update for council to consider.
But we didn't add it to the work program.
It is not part of the work program.
Okay. And so how much staff hours is?
We don't know, but it's quite minimal, less than 10 hours to do the research and to, I mean, it's part of the staff report preparation.
And then are there any meeting dates, minutes from the meetings with the sister city representatives?
I believe so. I believe there was one meeting that invited all of the representative from the sister city. And the date was included in supplemental. As this is a casual meeting, more of a meet and greet to introduce the city's new communication officer to the representative from the sister city committees, there was no meeting minutes required.
So it was a meet and greet. It wasn't specifically about policy update?
It was both.
Okay, and then are there meeting notes from the meeting?
There weren't any meeting notes.
To support the proposed policy update?
There aren't any written meeting notes. There were agreement and there were discussions that were reached between the city and the representatives.
Okay, because some of these modifications were beyond. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The first one is, on this page, the city will budget for one sister city delegation trip per year. So the number of the current sister city relationships will determine the rotating frequency of delegate visit. For example, right now we have four sister cities. So it's every four years that a sister city can bring a delegation.
That is true.
Okay, so and it continues to say if we have 10 sister cities, then it's every 10 years. I do have a concern on this because we have four very active sister cities. And if we continue to add to have maybe five or six, that means every sister city can only have one delegation happen every six years. If we add another one every seven years, I would think that the sister city is more active than that. So can I have some feedback on that, please?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Mayor. Good evening, Tina Kapoor, Deputy City Manager. So the delegation, visiting delegations were not included in this, in this, in this context. This is more for Mayor or your designee to travel to sister cities. So that's the rotation we added to make it more equitable. And that would depend on the number of sister cities. on the number of sister city relationships that we have at any given point.
Okay, so to follow through that, for example, I think we went to Xinju this year in April, so if, um, the sister city of Bumanashua would like to do one in November, that would not be, well, that, that spends two, 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 two years, okay, I get it. So, but if one does November and another one wants to do next year in April, that would not be allowed if we pass this one.
So th- this is, this is a proposed, um, uh, revision to the policy where, uh, we could take a calendar year, so one trip per calendar year based on, uh, the number of sister cities. Um, it's, and again, it's not, so the delegations can, you know, visit Cupertino, there's no limita- limitation on that, it's more, um, around travel for, for Cupertino.
Understand, it's more our delegation going out, understand. So, um, wh- I know we have sister city representation here, um, how do you think about that? Is that a restriction on, on you to do delegations out, or do you think that's okay with your, um...
So through the mayor, if I may, I think, I think the policy is, um, primarily on expenses paid by the city per trip, so there could be additional trips scheduled, it's just that city will not have funding allocated for more than one trip per year.
Understand, okay, I got it. My second question is, I have two minutes, I gotta ask it quickly, um, about the twenty-five dollar, you know, um, amount for gifts and then also two hundred dollars for, is that amount hasn't changed for, since when?
We don't have that amount right now.
Oh, so you just added that, okay, understand, and, okay, I have no questions then. So, member Moore?
Okay, uh, so in, within the budget, you have the sister cities budget unit one hundred ten dash one ten, um, service objectives, uh, further international communication, foster educational, technical, economic, and cultural exchanges. Um, there's a, uh, funding amount of seventy-three thousand eighty-six, it only seems to cover the sister cities and nothing for the friendship, um, cities here, uh, so what is this, um, budgeted amount for?
Um, I would need to get the, um, exact table so we can provide a follow-up to you, councilmember Moore.
So, okay, so it's a, it's a problem with regards to the policy, because I, um, well, it, by the way, uh, funding for this program includes sister cities' membership and visits, delegation swag and gifts as outlined in the sister cities' policy, so what you're saying is that the policy doesn't have the ability to, you don't have the gifts in, are in there, or do you, the, the amount for that?
We don't currently have the dollar amount specified for it, we do. Okay.
Yeah, in, in the existing policy, there is a limitation of twenty-five dollars for, for gifts, um, and then if I can also answer your question, councilmember Moore, the friendship cities do not get any funding from the city.
Okay. Um, also, within this budget item, you've got twenty thousand dollars listed for contract services, um, does, does someone know what that amount is for, and in twenty twenty-one, were there sister cities activities that, that happened?
Twenty twenty-one, I don't believe so, I believe that's the lockdown year.
That's what I thought, um, but we have, uh, expenditures of sixty thousand dollars for that, so that's part of the funding for, um, the sister cities, um, but there's another part, which is within the festival fee waivers, um, which are more expenses, and under, so you, you have the seventy-three thousand dollars that are budgeted to the sister cities, and then you have another, um, about forty thousand dollars for the festival fee waivers. I was trying to get a, a sense of the total amount that the city is, um, is, is gifting, because I, I know that the, I'm sure the sister cities do not want to be a drain on the city at this time, um, or the friendship cities, uh, but this policy also includes seventy-two total free facility uses, um, that's the four, um, committees with eighteen uses per year, uh, it says that they, um, are not allowed to use Community Hall or the Quinlan Community Center, but in the, in the letter that I sent in, there's, there are many other rooms within the city that can be rented, even, uh, the senior center spaces, so I would want this policy to reflect the hours allowed, the, uh, different, um, facilities that are actually going to be allowed, and what, what the limitation is, because this is going to, I don't know if the sister cities are actually using this much, um, that they're being offered, but we need to budget for that and know how much it could potentially cost if we find that this, it, it is being fully, um, utilized. And, uh, also with the, with the friendship cities, um, we're providing something for them, but I don't know how much staff time that actually takes and what the, what the total is, is going to cost. Um, so I'm, with sister cities, just bare minimum, I'm getting a hundred and, what is this, about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars bare minimum for, for the sister cities. We have a lot of other nonprofits within the, the community, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of them all fairly, equitably, and that there's a real accounting that people know about, um, and because these dollar amounts are separated into different locations, it's hard to get them connected, collected together. I've asked, um, for this before, and I, I would actually like this agenda item to come back and have a full accounting, um, of this, and, um, and also festival fee waivers, we've got other organizations which are, um, pro- being provided free use, I'd like to have a full accounting, and then, and then we can talk about these policy bits, because there's, I'm seeing things in different locations, and it's, it's, it's a little, it, we, I can't make a good decision based on what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Okay. So, member Frun?
On page five of the red line, there's a reference to termination of a sister city relationship, and it mentions, um, doing so for one that's been inactive for a certain period of time. Do we have a definition for what constitutes being inactive?
Yes, so, um, thank you for the question, councilmember Frun. So in the policy, it also says if the sister city affiliation is inactive for a period of three years and there's lack of community support for that sister city relationship to continue, that's when the termination comes into question.
Do, do we have a notion of what being inactive means?
Uh, it's not clear in the policy, we can add clarity around that.
Okay, I, I only bring it up if only because, you know, most of our sister cities are having a difficult time re-establishing their relationships post-pandemic, um, some of them more so than others, and so I would, I would hate for us to think that they're inactive despite the fact that they continue to meet and converse with their counterparts abroad, et cetera. Um, and then just to go back to, uh, the mayor's question earlier with regard to, um, the sister city delegation, that's really just about the mayor or the mayor's designate taking a trip abroad, yes, it doesn't preclude the sister city organization itself from organizing a student delegation, for example.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Thank you, councilmember Frun, and councilmember Chow, you have three, three and a half minutes.
So thank you for the attachment G, which is in the supplemental, not in, on the agenda packet, that, but the table does not include the meeting room uses. Do we have, uh, accounting of how much is equivalent in terms of the fee waiver for meeting room? Isn't, is that in the budget?
It's in the budget, we don't have the actual accounting right now, we can certainly come back with the, um, dollar amount.
Okay, and then the, the policy mentions, uh, title "City Cupertino Responsibilities With Regard to Non-City-Supported Sister City Committees." Do we have, then they get four free use of meeting rooms. Who are they? Do we even have this kind of committees? Why do we need this, I, section?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
One section of the current policy gives four free meeting room use to non-city-supported sister city committees. Do we even have non-city-supported sister city committees?
Could it be a friendship city activity?
It doesn't say friendship city, it says, so the, do friendship city get four free meeting room use? That's not in the policy, though.
Through the mayor, so, uh, in, in the policy, um, councilmember Chow, it states that the sister city with no student delegation would be considered a non-city-supported sister city, um, and they will not receive city funds, and currently we do not have any non-city-supported sister cities, all four city, sister city relationships are city-supported.
Oh, you mean, without student delegation, then it's considered non-city-supported?
That is correct.
And they get four free meeting rooms?
We, per policy, but we currently do not have, um, any non-supported sister city.
And then the termination, uh, the, the proposed policy would change the termination to become administratively approved and then presented to the council as the informational item. Currently, it's pre- it's usually put on the council agenda as a consent item, so I'm wondering in terms of staff time, is there a significant difference between putting this as a consent item versus informational item?
I think this change in policy reflects the, the desire to, to, um, try to keep fa- uh, council more focused on policy issues and, and to do, to try to, um, keep these types of operational issues that we're discussing at this meeting in the staff level, so, so we are responding to concerns raised by our internal auditors and others about, um, how this council has historically functioned at an inappropriate level of detail.
Um, but this, I, I thought it's pretty significant, when we have sister city, it's a formal relationship usually between council members and, uh, community members who support a certain city. Usually such relationship was not between city staff and them, so when we terminate such a relationship, it seems to be important to put that on the council agenda so the public is aware, and, and then it's a, as a consent item, it doesn't really take time, but then the council can ask questions, and especially when it terminates, communities are go- members are going to have questions.
Uh, Mayor, I believe, councilmember Chow's out of time?
So my, wait, my question was, is there a significant staff time difference? It wasn't answered. I wasn't asking for rationale.
I, I, um, I'll defer to the mayor as to whether...
Yeah, please, please answer, if, if the staff have any answers to that.
Um, I, I would, and as far as staff time, I would defer to the city manager on that answer.
Through the mayor, so, um, I don't know. I don't know if there will be a significant, uh, amount of difference in terms of staff time, but as, um, Chris mentioned, that what we're trying to do is to help council streamline applications and policies at the, at the right level.
You don't know whether there, it would be significant difference between consent agenda and men- information memo? That's surprising, thank you.
So, um, any, um, okay, councilmember Moore, you actually have thirty seconds.
Okay, um, so I just want to point out that we budgeted only, um, thirty-two thousand five hundred, unless there's a correction to that, um, for community funding, which were all of the nonprofits, that was the, the grand total there, and, um, so as I previously mentioned, I, I would like to have a, um, a total for the, the sister cities and the friendship cities before we, and the, the seventy-two potential uses now with an extra four or more, um, if we could have a grand total of that in, in that way, especially in light of the budget, we could, um, make, make a more informed policy decision, because we might want to get rid of the free use of the rooms or something like that.
So I, I think we're still on the question part of it. If, um, we have no more questions, I'd like to open up a public comment. Is that okay with me? Okay, let's open up a public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we have three speaker cards, uh, submitted for Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom. Kathy Helgerson, uh, we have sister city reps, Helene Davis, Alisa Sakis, Angela Chen, Janice Sung, who I assume will be speaking separately, you each get three minutes, and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Kathy. Uh, looks like Kathy has left, so if the sister city reps would like to provide comments?
Hi, I'm, we're sorted together because we always support one another. Um, I'll go first, since my sister city that I represent is the oldest, uh, relationship with the city of Cupertino. I'm Helene Davis, and I'm the president of the Cupertino-Copertino Italy Sister City Association, and I just wanted to thank the city for supporting our sister cities all these years, it's really important. Sister city relationships, I think, are unique, um, they are nonprofits, but there is a unique relationship with our city itself, and, uh, it's very important for these relationships to foster friendships and mutual understandings between cultures. I think there was a comment earlier about, you know, the world and, and the state of our world, and this is why it's really important to have sister cities, and I also appreciate that the city will update the policy occasionally, um, every few years, just to reflect our current circumstances. So with that, I'll turn it over to my next sister city.
Hi, I'm Alisa Sakis, I'm currently the president of the Cupertino-Toyokawa Sister City, and I won't repeat everything that Helene said, I am in complete agreement with her, and we wanted to express our gratitude to the city for all the support of the program over the years. We're celebrating our forty-fifth anniversary this year, um, and we've been continuously active for forty-five years, so thank you.
Hi, um, good evening, uh, mayor and councilmember, I'm Janice Sung, uh, the current chair of Cupertino-Xinju Sister City Association. Um, uh, we start, uh, the student exchange program from the two thousand seven, two thousand four, yeah, until now, uh, almost seventeen years, uh, long, and I would like to, uh, uh, express my thank you to everyone. Without your support, we cannot make it, and, uh, I also thank to the Cupertino School District and, uh, Fremont Union High School District, yeah. Thank you, thank you very much for your long-term support. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, next, uh, so I, Angela Chen, I do not see, so we will call up Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, um, I want to recognize, uh, councilmember Chow for noticing something that stuck out to me right away when I was looking at the red line, and that was, um, the, there was a, maybe you changed it, maybe a last-minute change, but there was something about, um, the minimum number of people on a trip, and it looked like it could have been one or zero would still get support, because it had been a five to nine, and it was changed just, or something like that, so that was one concern, um, sorry, I don't have it memorized. Um, but there's an, there's a larger issue here, is that we're talking about supporting clubs, these clubs do great things, um, I was thinking about this, you know, we have various organizations within our schools, there might be, uh, choir or band group, they'll go to a different country, and that's an international exchange, too, but they're not coming to the city council for money. These organizations get a lot of support from the city, um, that does translate to money, when we look at the, the, uh, festivals, um, when we look to giving out rooms in our city that could otherwise be rented for money, um, we are in a budget crunch, and, you know, we really need to spend our money wisely, and I'd like to see these organizations raise the money on their own, if, and, you know what, if the, if the mayor wants to go to, on a trip to sister city, or the city manager wants to go on a trip to the sister city, raise the money yourself. Um, you know, I, I go to, you know, you go to the store sometimes, they, they, they say, oh, you want to give another, you know, round up and give money to our charity? I said, no, I want to choose my own charities, and the same goes for the city Cupertino. You know what? I, city Cupertino, I want to choose my charities, I don't want you to tax, use my tax dollars for your choice of charities, and it has nothing to do against the sister cities, but we need, you know, we're not, we're not rolling in dough. We were rolling in dough, we really had the good times rolling, but we don't anymore, and we need to be more prudent with our, with our money. So, as far as allocating funds, we're already allocating, we are already allocating in lieu funds, which are funds... lieu funds, which are funds, but extra money, no. We have to, we have to stop, we have to stop now. You guys are great, you do good things to the communities, but also we look at the number of people who are, you know, affected by this, when you compare some of the other things that we're doing within the city that are being cut. So, I know, I'm a Debbie Downer, but that's how it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we will move to Zoom. We have one hand raised by San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, city council. Firstly, I want to express my fullest support for the sister city commissions and all of the volunteers that work with the sister cities. I would encourage the council to support the sister cities and to fully fund this program. Before I say anymore, firstly, let me say that I am a participant in the program myself, since I will be hosting one of the students as a part of the upcoming delegation in a couple of weeks. As a part of the exchange program, my home will be hosting one of the students from Sincho for, I think, about a week to eight days. I was also fortunate, and as a family, we were blessed, to have the opportunity to send our daughter on the recent sister city program trip to Sincho, the same one that was accompanied by the mayor and the city manager. As a result, I've had the good fortune to work closely with the Sincho Sister City Commission and observe them in action. The meeting rooms that you're describing are used for the purpose of hosting the families for logistics meetings for a period of four weeks. Those meetings are ongoing right now. I attended one such meeting in the Cupertino library that was conducted a couple of Mondays ago. So these meetings and the use of these meeting rooms are really for public use, they're not for some underhanded use, and they're used to allow the sister city volunteers to explain the program, walk through the agenda, and make sure people understand what is coming. I would like to comment on the few changes in the policies that were made and the red line. I would request the council to kindly delete the clause that limits the program to one council or one sister city delegation visit per year. I think that is highly restrictive. I think the program will die out a death if you have a visit only once every four years. I would encourage you to do a visit every year. I would also encourage you to bring back the minimum to a number of five, as it was before. The program does not have adequate quorum if you do not have at least five students on the trip. And finally, I do want to say it is important to increase the mayor to participate or a council member. So any program that is assumed to be okay without participation from the council or mayor does not have the same strategic significance. Finally, I want to say I'm really disappointed in councilmember Moore and Chow in really kind of nitpicking on this program. Really, really disappointed and upset. And I want to say that this is a big enough issue that this will influence votes in 2024. Continuing to nitpick on the sister cities, which is a program.
Thank you, that is your time, San. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
All right, thank you. I am going to close the public comment and thank all the people who made comments, and I'll bring back for council for discussion on five minutes each. I actually would like to start this, no objection. I want to say the festival field use item has been thoroughly discussed during the festival fee item, I remember vividly. And I do believe that especially for Toyocoua, the Chair Blossom Festival, two days, is an award-winning festival, it serves our residents. So the fee waiver is to serve our residents. And I want to ask President Lisa, if you have to pay, I don't know, the fees, will you be able to even run the festival? Right, so I don't consider the income, because when you don't even do the festival, we're not having that income. So we are doing that as a service to our residents for festivals that's enjoyed by not just our residents, really of our neighboring residents, and it gets our names out there. So I would like to really not to discuss again on the festival fee waiver, because that's been thoroughly discussed, I remember. And as to the room usage, I think San R said very clearly, it's really for the usage of when we have student delegations or delegation from sister cities to come, to use our facilities to explain things and to present our city. So I do think those are in-kind support of our sister cities. Sister cities is an official organization for any city. We're not the only one who has sister cities. So to support it fully is really what I think we should support it. As for one delegation per year for mayor, I actually have no objection to that, because we can have two, but the mayor has to pay for himself expenses. I'm okay with that, because that's really limit, we want to, you know, be frugal, so that we are not going to have the mayor go out to five times to, for all five sister cities. So I'm okay with that. But I do want to make one, bring back the student delegation limitation. I don't think one student represents a visit. So I remember the original is five to nine, and I would like to bring back that. I would like to ask the sister cities representatives, are those reasonable to have at least five students to come in order to get the funding? Because one student really doesn't, doesn't cut it. Is that four is better? So can, will you be able to give me some feedback? Yes, please.
Okay, so I made that suggestion. So I think four might be reasonable, and the reason we did this is because we draw our student delegation from a smaller pool, and we usually have around six. But because we haven't been able to have an exchange for three years, three-plus years, we may not be able, you know, we need to re-ramp up this program. So we wouldn't even send a delegation if it was just one student. Probably the minimum we would send is four. So I guess I would request maybe four to nine, but of course, it's up to the city council.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I can see to restart a program, and from a very small village in Cupertino, Italy, could be challenging. So if, what I would recommend is four to nine, but with council approval, could be less than four. Is that, that's what I would, you know, revend the program. So that's my comment. And so I'm going to open up to other councilmembers' comment, please. Vice Mayor Mohan, some of the light is not coming up on my light, but that's okay. I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment was in the travel expenses section. You've said the city will budget for one sister city delegation per year. Number of current sister city relationships will determine the rotating frequency of delegate visits, et cetera. My suggestion would be not to sort of state it in such a restrictive way. We could say that, of course, the budget, we need to make sure that we budget for only one sister city delegation per year, so we certainly don't want to increase that. But there should be some flexibility if another option for a sister city delegation visit comes up in either the fiscal year or the calendar year, that we should be able to entertain that, not on, not using city monies, but we should just be, keep it open enough so that if there's interest by another city, that they want to entertain us, or we want to entertain them. It's mostly they wanting to entertain us. We should have that flexibility, as long as there's no impact to the budget.
Okay, Councilmember Chow.
Oh, Councilmember Chow, your microphone is not working.
First of all, I fully support the sister city program, and I recognize that the committee members put in a lot of time making it happen. And especially student exchange program require a lot of commitment from the volunteers to make it happen. So really, really appreciate all of the committee members to put in the effort year after year and after year. This is really a beneficial program. I am not, I am looking, I'm not nitpicking on the program. What I am trying to do is to ensure we follow the policies that we have in place, so that we don't play favoritism to some organization versus others. And we don't have certain policies come forward while other policies, like noise policy, the sign ordinance policy, people have requested and couldn't be approved because there is no staff resource. The policy is we put things on worker program so that we can prioritize on what, how much time the staff has to spend on. But then, sister city has consistently, especially this year, to not follow the policy. We had to approve the budget for the city manager to attend on a delegation trip one day before the flight goes out. That's not following the policies. All I'm requesting is, please, let's follow the policy. And ensuring we follow the policy ensures this program gets wider public support, because it doesn't become, try to play favoritism in the city's eye. And it seems we are going to increase, we are going to reduce services, increase fees, especially likely meeting fees for the other organizations. Should we continue to provide free, free use for sister cities? That's something I hope that when we consider the fee increase in January that I heard, please also bring all the fee waivers in terms of meeting rooms to be considered together, so that when we consider increasing fees for the general public, we have the background information on who we are giving the free resources to, just for better information. Yeah. And I, I think the promotional gift of $25 was in the original policy. I would like, I see that there is a change of, it was initially promotional gift to delegations only, and now it's added to students. Whether it's only delegates or the students, I would like to see a maximum of dollar amount per year. For example, maybe not exceed $500 per year per committee. This way, because if we include student delegates, it could be 60 students, then that could be $1,500 a year, and on top of the $5,000, so that would be a lot. So then, the current minimum is five students, and I like the suggestion of, with council approval, a lower minimum could be considered, because there are these genuine circumstances like during the COVID. But maybe we shouldn't change the policy because of the COVID. But then, let's create that potential for giving special considerations. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, so I concur with pretty much everything that Councilmember Chow just said. But we are in a budget crunch, and I am pretty well-known for looking at the details within this budget, and I will question whether we're doing things in a fair and balanced way. So that might bother people that are trying to make sure that they get funding for a certain nonprofit versus another. But, you know, I'm looking at the budget and the struggles that we had reducing down the community funding, which was growing and growing and growing, and then we pulled it all the way back to $32,500. It was, it was a really, it was a really big drop. The previous year, we had a $92,000 adopted budget for our grant. In 2021, our actual community grant funding was, gosh, it was $102,000. It had been ballooning, and so we pulled it way back to $32,000. So I hope that my council colleagues will be brave moving forward, as we see that we need to make cuts and request the information so that we can make comparisons with grant funding versus the various bucket locations of funding that we have for the sister cities, so that we're able to make sure that we're following what the community wants and have that directive. Because if the directive is from the community, yes, we want to be spending, it's over $110,000 on the sister city committees, then that's the directive we go with. But we have to, in my opinion, have that discussion. And I think this policy discussion kind of opens the door to that. And I would kind of question to staff if they could provide the final festival fee waivers that we did for the year. It had been in the budget book last year, but I couldn't locate it today. And I think that would, that would help. So I really didn't have a lot of comments about the policy. I wanted to hear what the sister city committees had to say about it. Most of my issues are with the financial balancing and whether or not we're being fair to all of the organizations that come to us asking for money. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments from the council? Councilmember Frum, please.
Yeah, I think that the sister city committees are a wonderful community asset. I think that we should do what we can to help continue to support them. I think that these are a worthy addition to what we do as a city, and with that, I'd like to make the following motion, which is to move the staff recommendation with the following addition, directing the city manager to amend the proposed policy to include a definition of an inactive sister city committee within the meaning of the proposed termination policy in coordination with the four sister city committees.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'd like to second that with a friendly amendment. So the friendly amendment is two parts. The first one is student numbers to be between four and nine. If it's under four, come back to the council with special permission to do that. And the second one is, I understand about delegation for one year, but I would like to make it simpler. The city will budget for one sister city delegation trip that sponsored the mayor per year. Okay, then the rest is just irrelevant, because we can have more trips, and the mayor or the delegate or other council members want to go, they just have to pay for themselves. So, but we will ultimately pay just one trip per mayor per year. 50%, that there is a, there is a policy on that one. So that's my two friendly amendment.
By mayor, you mean the mayor or the mayor's designate?
Yes, the mayor or the mayor's designate.
Okay, then I would accept that friendly amendment.
We have a motion and a friendly amendment. Second by me was a friendly amendment approved by Councilmember Frum, who's the original motioner. Discussions?
I have a question. So the current policy, as it reads, it only says the city should budget for one trip. It doesn't say there could be two, there couldn't be two or more trips, that's not budgeted. So it doesn't seem like there is a need to modify.
I just don't want to have everything else under that, because the current says the city will budget for one sister city delegation trip per year. The number of current sister city delegations will determine, and I don't think that's necessary.
That means the budgeted one will be.
Right, just to make it simple, that they only, will only pay the mayor once, or the mayor designate. The rest of.
I thought the current policy already does what you said.
Sorry about that.
Okay, never mind. So another question is regarding the.
Councilman, Mayor, wait. I believe that Councilmember Chow has not been recognized, and she's also out of time. So are you extending time to discuss this item?
This is for the motion.
Yes.
There's a motion on the table, but you've already used your time for deliberation.
We usually have what?
Why don't we give you two more minutes?
Five more minutes for the motion.
The mayor has to grant you additional time at this point.
We'll each get two more minutes, if, okay.
Okay, thank you. So the second question is regarding, I think the term non-city-supported sister committee. So the second question is regarding, I think the, the term non-city supported sister committee is not defined and it was confusing. I didn't know non-city supported sister committee is the ones without student delegation. Is that clear in the policy? Or maybe I missed a section?
I, I would defer to, to Tina.
Sorry, I missed a question. Are you?
Is it, is there a definition of non-city supported sister committee? Which is the ones that would receive free, for free room uses? I understand just now that means the ones without student delegation, but it doesn't seem to be clear.
We can add that language in if that's what the council wants.
To clarify that term, yeah.
So do we have to have a friendly amendment to clarify that? Because it's pretty clear to me that the city supporter means they have student, we pay the 2,500 or the 5,000. And if they don't have a delegation, then their room use will be limited, more limited because they don't need that a student, you know, explain. So I am clear about that. So if you want to make a friendly amendment, you can make a friendly amendment.
Okay, I would like that friendly amendment because I, it wasn't clear to me. Yeah. To clarify the term, non-city supported sister committee is the city, the sister city committee without student delegation.
Okay, Councilmember Frum, your original motion?
I'll accept it.
And I, I'll second that. I'll accept your friendly amendment too. Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
So are we, and I'm sure you stated this, Mayor, I, I just didn't get it. Are we saying that there will be only one sister city delegation trip per year? We're not saying that?
Just one payment, one mayor has one.
Okay, good. I will support it then.
Sorry. Councilmember Chow?
Could I propose another friendly amendment? Um, add, right now it reads promotional gifts shall not exceed the cost of $25 each. Could we add not to exceed the $500, for example, per year per committee, just in case there might be 60 delegation because now we include students?
I, I will not accept because I, I just feel that to limit that is, first, I don't think it's necessary.
That's about four, 20.
We're not going to have 60 students come.
Per year.
Okay, I'm not going to accept that.
If we are not going to have 60, then this limit doesn't really is a, is not really a restriction.
Councilmember Frum, your original motion, would you accept that?
So I'm not going to accept it if only for the reason that I, I trust the discretion of staff in terms of how much they're going to actually spend on it. And if it becomes an issue, we can revisit it. We're going to revisit the policy from time to time as it, as it is. I think that this motion is getting rather ponderous.
Does the staff has a discretion?
The friendly amendment hasn't been accepted, Councilmember Chow.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussions? If not, I would like to entertain a vote by light, please.
Um, I'd like to make a substitute motion. They need a vote on this. Would I?
You would have to recognize, you could either call, you could either vote or recognize Councilmember Chow to make a substitute motion. But, 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 but the mayor, it's the mayor's decision whether to recognize Councilmember Chow at this point.
Sure. Why don't you make your substitute motion?
But point of order first, does the mayor has the right to reject a friend, a substitute motion before even here at all?
The mayor, the mayor, the mayor, under Rosenberg's rules of order, the mayor can, can end debate at any time, subject to, to, um, subject to a vote of council to, to override that. We, under our rules procedure, allow five minutes of, of, of questions and deliberations for each member, which has now been exhausted.
I thought the mayor has the right to end the discussion for a particular item or?
Let's not talk about it again.
That includes refusing a man.
Could you make your substitute motion, please?
Okay. Okay. So I'd like to move the staff recommendation, um, including the, what was proposed by the previous motion about a minimum of four student delegation with, with the council's ability to approve a lower minimum as necessary. And clarify non-city supported sister committee and clarify, um, what Mayor mentioned about the annual budget delegation. But in addition, I would like to add that we have a maximum limit of $500 for promotional gift per sister city per year. And then the termination of sister and friendship city committee would continue to come to the council agenda as consent item. And when the city considers fee increases in likely January, I'd like staff to bring all the fee waivers and the community grant funding for the same city resources to be considered together so we are equitable and inclusive of organizations.
We have a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, but I want to clarify with regards to the festival fee waivers. Did you also mean facilities?
I meant if we are considering fee increase for facilities, we should consider fee waivers for those facilities. If we are considering fee waivers, I mean, fee increase for other things, we should consider fee waiver that we currently grant for the same city resources so that when we increase the fee for certain, for everyone.
Understood.
We have that information.
Thank you. The second stands.
So we have a substitute motion made by Councilmember Chow, second by Councilmember Moore. Any discussions? If not, we.
Yes, I would like to make some comments on that. So I, I appreciate the substitute motion.
Two minute comment, please.
Pardon?
Two minute comment, please.
Yes, sure. If you want to put the clock up there, sure. Okay, so I appreciate the substitute motion and the, the reason why is because we, I, I like the idea that we're going to have the potential to have this information made public and then we can have comments from other people within the community about, about the funding. We were supposed to have moved on and had a festival fee waiver discussion and like we did with the grant policy, the grant funding policy in order to clarify that and deal with issues of equity for donating city money. And so I, I really like that idea and I think it's where we need to go moving forward and come up with a policy about this so that we don't look as though we're showing favoritism. And I think that'll help. Thank you.
Okay, we have a, no more comments. Then I would ask for a vote on the substitute motion that made by Councilmember Chow, second by Councilmember Moore by light, please.
The substitute motion fails with Chow and Moore voting yes.
Okay, so we have an original motion on the table. I would like to entertain a motion to vote by light on the motion that.
Since my motion failed, I hope to make a friendly amendment to add the last item to your motion, to the, the main motion.
Okay, please, please make your friendly amendment.
Yeah, so I'd like to please consider the friendly amendment so that when the city considers fee increases for transparency and accountability, bring all the fee waivers and the community grant funding for the same city resources to be considered together so we are equitable and inclusive to all organizations.
Councilmember Frum, this is your motion. Would you accept the friendly amendment?
It, it feels extraneous again. The motion is already extremely ponderous, so I'm not going to accept them.
The friendly amendment is not accepted. We, if there's no more discussions, let's vote on the motion that made by Councilmember Frum, second, second by me. And with the friendly amendment, that's accepted by both Councilmember Frum and me. Let's vote by light, please.
Frum's main motion, as amended, carries with Chow and Moore voting no.
Okay, thank you. We have one more item, which is item number nine. Do we need a break?
No.
No?
No.
Nobody needs a break?
No.
Okay, so we're moving into item number nine, which is, award a construction contract for the McClellan Road Separated Bike Corridor Phase Three project to Rich Week Construction Company for improvements at intersection of Deansa Boulevard and McClellan Road Pacific Drive and approve a budget modification in the amount of $970,000. Do we have a staff report?
We have a staff report in your packet and we also have Public Works Director Chad Mosley here to answer, I believe, Councilmember Chow's question.
Okay, so before, well, let's ask questions before we open up a public comment. Councilmember Chow?
My question mainly want to clarify the funding sources for this project. And from the staff report, it seems it would be mainly through some grants. So if you could clarify that, since we are in budget crisis. So I was wondering, this is one of the project that we approved because we had extra money since April 2021. And now we are adding more money to it. But given the case that there are grant, it might be worthwhile. So I'd like some clarification on that.
Understood. Again, Councilmembers Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. In the staff report, we kind of break out the various funding aspects for this project. The project does have about $164,000 of city funding. Aside from that, we have about 160 that came from a donation agreement from one of our companies in the, in the city. We also have a million dollars in a Verbs grant and Verbs is basically allocated towards bike and pedestrian improvements to enhance safety. And with, with that money, we had gone out to bid earlier this year and we received two bids at that time. One of the bids we found non, unresponsive and the other bid came in and it was considerably higher than we thought it would be. So we, at, at that point in time, had asked council to reject all bids and we decided to rebid the project at a later date to try and get more interest in the project and see if maybe modifying the time of year that the project would be completed would provide a better price. So we rebid that project and with that, you have the results of this bid process. It did come in a little less expensive, it was about 55 to 60,000. We did receive a number of bids with this one, three of them all on about the same area, about the same cost. So we realized that the bids we got for this project are fairly realistic. However, it did require additional funds above and beyond those that are budgeted. Those additional funds are in the, in about 950 to 975,000 is not a small increase in the project cost. Looking at that, what I think is a fairly substantial increase in project costs, we looked to see what other types of external funds we could find. And with that, we were able to allocate SB one funds to cover that. So the majority of this project is externally funded with about $164,000 of, of direct city funds.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions from Councilmember Chow? If not, if there's no more questions, I want to bring you to public comment. Let's start a public comment. Do we have any cards here?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker card from Helene Davis and I see three hands raised on Zoom. Welcome, Helene.
Hello, good evening again, Mayor Wei and fellow council members. So I'd like to speak in support of moving this project forward. I actually ride this route often. It's the extension of the McClellan Road Corridor. I take it to go to City Hall, to the library, to connect with the Regnar Creek Trail. And I'm a confident cyclist, but I know there's a lot of other folks out there that maybe don't feel that comfortable and you have to cross six lanes of traffic. So I think improvements in this area are really important. And as Chad Mosley said, most of the funding is already set, the project's ready to go, it's mostly grants. And so anyway, I, I really would encourage you to approve this project this evening and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Helene. Next we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening again. And I just want to thank council for, for opening this up for discussion because we do care about our dollars and cents and we do care about the details. And I know that, you know, the city attorney talked about this evening about, you know, maybe getting down too much in the weeds and the details. But, you know, I, I went to mid-Penn meeting a while ago, a year plus ago, and they, their board was talking about how much money they were going to spend on chairs. All right? This, this is all about our tax dollars. And I really appreciate opportunity for the public and for the city council to talk about how our tax dollars are being spent in the city. I don't know an awful lot about this project, but I sure appreciate the directors doing due diligence, finding, you know, being creative, looking for places for money, looking for, looking for what budgets to take them out of. And, and, and that's, that's what we want to see. That's what we want to see all the time, in good times and in bad. Right? So I really want to take a really close look at all the projects we have. And also, just because, sometimes just because you do have funding for something, and this is not necessarily really to this project, doesn't mean that just because we can get some grants and, but if we have to match them, it's still money out of pocket. And please, I'm begging you, please be careful with, with our money. Would we have, you know, do you think that we would have approved this project back one if we knew where we would be now? And, and frankly, I'm, I'm really stunned that, how bad things look now and why now was not predicted earlier because we should have known that it was going to be that 56 million. There's no reason why we shouldn't have. It was just, and this whole thing of soft landing and all, it's, it, it's smoke and mirrors, guys, you know? And I'm not happy about it. So I'll let you be. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And now, Mayor, we have six hands raised on Zoom, so I will switch to Zoom. We have Larry Dean, followed by Henry Wajaja, followed by Seema Linska. Welcome, Larry.
Thank you. My name is Larry Dean. I'm a 43-year resident of Cupertino and an avid supporter of safe walking and biking in Cupertino. I'd first like to say thank you to Mayor Hung Wei and to Pan Wu and her staff. You're in the middle of a long slog and this is a lot of work that everybody has taken on and it's brilliant, apparently, you can, you can see that. So the term resilience kind of comes to mind and thank you for doing what you do for the community. Dear council, I urge you to approve item nine on tonight's agenda, which allows the funded intersection project at McClellan and Deansa Boulevard to move forward. Deansa Boulevard has to be Cupertino's busiest road highway that essentially forms a barrier separating the east and west sides of the community. From a bike vehicle conflict perspective, it is dangerous and forms a crossing barrier that limits citizens' mobility. The reengineering of the McClellan-Deansa intersection is a linchpin, high-value project for the community and will continue to help improve the safety and the access profile for its diverse set of walking and biking residents. Thank you for approving this project.
Thank you, Larry. Next we have Henry Wajaja, followed by Seema Linska, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Henry.
Good afternoon, council members. And yeah, thank you for, thank you for allowing me to speak. And I just want to make a comment on this project. Like this project is really, really necessary. I'm an avid biker in Cupertino and honestly, the bike lanes around Cupertino are amazing. And obviously there are. And obviously, there are some problem spots in Cupertino. This is one of those problem spots. But unlike some of the other problem spots in the community, some of them being in residential areas, this is on a big road. And if we can get some change in this intersection, it'd really be appreciated. There are dangerous spots on this intersection. I passed this intersection many times. When I go from Cupertino High School to Monavista, I like to take like a squiggly residential road, just because it's safer. But this intersection has a lot of flaws. It sometimes gets confusing, and especially coming north from, like, north on Deansa. You have to cut across lanes of traffic that don't really have a bike lane. Like, it's not that safe. In addition, when you're coming from the library towards Monavista, you have to cross over a lane in which the cars, like, the cars cross over the bike lane to turn right onto Deansa. So that's also a very big point of conflict. I think with the proposed design, with the proposed redesign, I think that problem is mostly eliminated. Like, it's really minimized, and it helps a lot, and it makes the intersection a lot safer. So if you could approve this, if you could approve this item, this would, it'd just be amazing. It would make the intersection a lot safer for walkers and bikers in Cupertino. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Next, we have Seema Linska, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Joel Wolf. Welcome, Seema.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Yes.
All right. Respected Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and councilmembers, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a planning commissioner for the city of Cupertino, but tonight I'm speaking as an individual resident. I want to start by, just like Larry did, I want to express my sincere thanks and gratitude to the staff for your diligence and hard work in moving projects forward such as this in the face of a very difficult budget situation. Just know that it is noticed and very much appreciated. I urge you to proceed with the construction of this intersection. It improves the safety of drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists, and really needs to get completed. It's long overdue. It's identified in the Vision Zero data as one of the most dangerous intersections in the city with multiple documented collisions. Like Helene, who spoke earlier, I walk and bike through this intersection frequently, and I often see how dangerous it is, especially for seniors walking through children and less confident cyclists. The improvements that are planned add an additional pedestrian crossing. They improve signaling to give pedestrians and cyclists more time to cross comfortably, a better sidewalk for pedestrians, improved striping, and reduce mixing of car traffic with pedestrians and cyclists. It's a very thoughtful redesign. Staff did a great job of gathering community input and addressing all the issues that were identified. The project is fully funded, as Chad explained, almost entirely through grants. So it is really the fiscally responsible thing to do for the city to complete the construction of this project. And given our budget difficulties, leveraging grants to complete projects is really the smartest thing we can do. So again, I urge you to proceed with the construction of this intersection and make this intersection safer for all of residents. Thank you for your time and for everything you do for the city.
Thank you, Seema. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Joel Wolf, followed by San R. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, city councilmembers, Mayor Way, and city staff. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only tonight. I ask you tonight to vote yes, to accept the bid for this portion of the McClellan Road Bike Lanes Project. This has been a change that has been needed for a long time. There has been a significant amount of traffic crossing this intersection by both walking and biking residents. They need more safety. I personally use this intersection on my bike or by walking several times a week. The project is ready to go. It's had a completed design for a while, and only because the previous bid was recommended to be rejected has it not yet begun. I appreciate that the city staff has been careful with our city funds and has worked to get our city a competitive and fair bid that you have in front of you today. Most importantly, there's no cost to the city. 1.3 million has already been allocated, and this funding is 90% from grants. The rest of the funds will come from an SB one grant funding. This funding cannot be moved to other projects in the city as it is designated for transportation projects. This is an item that made sense to put on the consent calendar as it is a follow-up from many previous discussions and was originally planned to be completed by the end of last year. I urge you to approve it tonight without further delay. Thank you again for your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Joel Wolf, followed by San R. Welcome, Joel. And Joel, I see you are unmuted.
Oh, good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. My name is Joel Wolf, and I've been a resident of Cupertino for the last 38 years. And I'm speaking for myself, although I am the current chair of the Cupertino Bike Ped Commission. I urge the council, strongly urge the council, to approve Agenda Item Number Nine regarding the award of this contract for the improvements of the intersection at Deansa Boulevard and McClellan Road. You know, I frequently use this intersection, both as a pedestrian and a cyclist. And it is one of the more dangerous intersections you can cross in Cupertino. And I, it is definitely, after reviewing the design plans, I believe these improvements will significantly enhance the safety of this really very busy intersection for both pedestrians and cyclists. And I think it's great that most of these improvements are fully funded by grant money. I think it's, and it's certainly, I think it's where this, you know, this is a great project, and it's where we should be putting our money when you need this type of improvement. And again, I would be very happy when these improvements are complete. And I urge the council again to approve Agenda Item Number Nine. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. And our final speaker is San R. Welcome, San.
Good evening, city council. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, although I will also identify as the school representative for both Feria Elementary and Monavista High on the Safe Routes to School Working Group. I represent both of those schools. Both of them happen to be in the McClellan Corridor, and both of them have a number of young, vulnerable bicyclists that have to ride this stretch. Several of them coming across from the east side of Cupertino and having to cross Deansa, particularly because Feria is a lottery school and gets students from all parts of Cupertino. I do think that this is a project we should fund. The Deansa Junction is an extremely dangerous junction. I also happen to drive that stretch almost every day and take that stretch for a number of reasons to both drop school kids, pick school kids, but also to get to the library and to get to other parts that are east of Deansa. I think this stretch is confusing for both drivers as well as cyclists and can be quite intimidating for young, cool-age bicyclists. We also have a more recent phenomenon with all these cooties and variants of cooties and all kinds of two-wheeler rides that are being used by students. And I think we need to do more on Deansa to make it a safe route for students. Finally, I do want to recognize the ingenuity of Chad Mosley and his team to identify ways to get grant funding so that this reduces the actual cost that the city has to bear. So kudos to Chad, another one of his accomplishments for the city. So appreciate everything he does, and I hope he will approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no further speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to council. I'd like to thank all the comments. Thank you very much. And I'm going to bring it back to council, and I think Councilmember Chow, you like council first?
I'm happy to move the staff recommendation. Or should I do that later?
You can do it then.
Okay.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, we have motion by Councilmember Chow. This time, I'm going to give Vice Mayor Mohan her second. And any discussions? Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I just want to kind of follow up on some of the comments about this being a dangerous intersection. In a four-year period, I'm seeing there were nine crashes and seven involved bicyclists at this location. I don't know if you have more current data than that, but going, looking at various intersections in the city, this is one of the worst ones. Is that something that you have observed, or you have some more current data on that as well?
I don't have, I don't have current data on that tonight. I do know from the bicycle transportation plan that at that time it was studied that it was one of the more dangerous intersections.
Yes, okay. And this is going to address that somehow. I see that you're redoing the signals. And so what exactly about this is going to improve the safety? If we could just have a just quick summary?
Yeah, so briefly, it does kind of, there are a number of conflict points with bicycle lanes and vehicle movements at this intersection. There is a, what they call pork chop there at the northeast corner of Pacifica and Deansa. This project will eliminate that pork chop, which reduces that conflict with bicyclists there. Further, it aligns some of the vehicular lanes, so they're not quite as off-kilter. And it does provide, you know, kind of a bit more separation with bicyclists and provides more of a defined bicycle lane around the corners. So it, generally, it adds a number of features that eliminate conflicts. And additionally, it does, you know, not necessarily provide additional safety, but better pedestrian access throughout the intersection as well.
Okay, excellent. I've seen it, the misalignment of the streets is, it gave the engineers a lot of challenge for that. What I couldn't pull up were the project plans. I could see the original RFP, but I couldn't pull up the project plans for that. So if you would be able to offline provide that, I'm kind of curious about what their ultimate solution was for that intersection because it is, like I said, challenging. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, you like this one?
And thank you for a great staff report. You included all the bids and then the history well. And you even included a link to the bid document. I think I asked that last time. Thank you for including that. However, it needs password to access. I was hoping to find out more about the project. But thank you for the map that's included in the supplemental with a map of the intersection. If this kind of map could be included in the staff report, that would be awesome. So people have some idea on what the scope of the project. And just thank you for all the work that you have done. And this kind of bike path project is something that I have wanted to prioritize everything that I got on the council. It's the intersections. It's where it's high accident area. So this is the kind of project I'm more than happy to support. We had focused a lot more others, project that's on less risky areas. But this, I'm really happy to see, this is, I think, the first, oh, no, not the first. There were some in Stevens Creek ones. But this is a really important intersection, like everyone said. So really happy to support the project. Thank you for finding grants to support it.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote by light, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're moving to, we don't have public hearing. Wait a minute, that's, I'm sorry. I went a little bit too front. We are moving to council reports and comments. I think we all have submitted our council reports. If there are no comments, I'd like to, do we have any comments on council reports? No, I want to move to city manager report because we haven't had that for a while.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So we have a video that has been ready since the summertime. So this will bring you some fond memories from July, Fourth of July, the summer camp, and also the music in the park. So video, if you can please play the video. Thank you.
Okay, I was hoping for more reports. Okay, so we are at 10:17. We got council and staff comments and future agenda items?
None, Mayor Way.
How about from the council and future agenda items? If not, I would like to call the adjournment of the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Chow?
So Councilmember Moore has requested some future agenda item. Would you like to mention it at this time?
Oh, we've requested them in email, and they will be coming up on the TBD list.
So when is the TBD list coming up?
November.
November?
Okay, so if we have no comment, I'd like to call the meeting.
I have a agenda item. I think there, a few members have been asked a few times about the videotaping for the commission meetings. And if that, we can get a report on that. And also, I remember in the last year's work program, we included an item which is hybrid meeting for all the commission meetings. And apparently, that's not completed. So if I can get a status update on that, that would be great. I think after COVID, people, we have find out hybrid meeting really provides more access for a lot of seniors, people with kids, young kids at home, so that they can attend meeting. They don't have to be in, they can be cooking dinner while listening to council meetings. I think we really need to provide that access, both for council meetings and commission meetings. So if that's, I thought we requested that last year. Was there difficulties encountered or resource issue? I hope to get some updates. Thank you.
So that's the future agenda item you're proposing? Do we have a?
I guess I'm requesting information. Does that have to be agendized? I think it's the city manager's discretion.
Okay, can city manager so noted?
I believe this portion of the agenda is reserved for any future agenda item or any item that is seconded by another council member, and we'll bring it back. So anything that's been proposed on this dais, I think will come back to council.
So do I need a second for this information request?
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay.
I have a second.
Okay, it's a move a second. Okay, that's moving forward?
But can we just quickly get an answer on the proxy rec meeting, video recording?
There isn't none. There isn't any.
I don't think that's on the agenda, so I don't think we're going to have a discussion on that. Okay, so if there is no more comments in council, I would like to call the adjournment at 10:20. All right.